All right. Good evening. I'd like to call to order tonight's Township of Howell Planning Board Meeting for September 23, 2021. Opening statement, Eileen.
Thank you. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 8, 2021, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Trittown News. Second, on January 8, 2021, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 8, 2021, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Members of the public will have a chance to ask questions and comment on applications once the chairman opens the hearing up to members of the public. If you wish to ask questions or comments on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature, and we will bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need to have audio and video capability. You will be sworn in, and you will need to provide your name and address. For anyone calling in, you can use the, excuse me, you can raise your hand using star nine. You can also lower your hand using star nine, and you can use star six to mute or unmute yourself. Please note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a roll call.
Yes. Mr. Bavai?
He said he can't hear you.
Okay. I can't hear him either, so he has no sound. Mr. Dorado was excused. Mr. Huss, Chief, Mr. Hussar, I'm sorry.
Here.
Chief Kudrick?
Here.
Mr. Leggio was excused. Mr. Nacastro?
Here.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Here.
Mr. Seaman was excused. Ms. Casper?
Here.
Mr. Cristiano?
Here.
And we'll wait for Mr. Ten, Chairman Tannenhouse. You have a quorum.
Thanks. If everyone could, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And yet another day of turning on the news and another awful event down in Tennessee. If we could just take a moment with one dead and 12 injured in a cowardly Tennessee store shooting. Chief?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the approval of minutes, the first being the regular meeting for June 17, 2021. Eligible voters are Mr. Bavai, myself, Councilwoman Richmond, Ms. Casper, Ms. Cristiano, and that is it.
Eileen, can you let Mr. Bavai back in, please? Mr. Boom is in the waiting room trying to get back in. I'm sorry to interrupt, Nick. Sorry.
Okay. Okay. Can you hear us now, Paul?
Maybe Paul can dial in on the phone and have his video going and dial in for audio.
He's gonna dial in from his phone.
Okay. And Chairman Tannenhouse has joined us. While we wait for Paul, if somebody wants to make a motion on those minutes, we can move on.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Mr. Bavai, I guess he can't hear me. Mr. Hussar?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse. That's for the minutes. Yes, minutes of June 17.
I'm gonna have to pass. I'm, 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 I'm in and out on internet right now.
Okay. Motion carries.
So, so am I continuing here, or is Brian with us, or what?
Why don't we wait, why don't we wait till we get to the applications? You continue, please, because my internet say unstable, so maybe it'll straighten itself out.
Got to feed that hamster in the wheel to keep it going, Brian. Regular meeting minutes for August 5, 2021. Eligible voters are myself, Mr. Nacastro, Ms. Casper, and Mr. Tannenhouse, if he can hear us.
I can hear you.
I'll make the motion, Nick.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Mr. Hussar?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
You're muted, Laura.
Yes.
Thank you. And Chairman Tannenhouse? Motion carries. Thank you.
Last 12 minutes. I'm sorry. Paul is, I think he dialed in as an attendee. There's a phone number listed there.
Yes, he says, please add him because he's, he can hear on the phone.
I don't have him on here yet with his phone. That's someone else calling in. Unless he's using a different number.
He's, okay.
Can you hear us now?
I can hear now.
All right.
Stupid technology.
Last approval of minutes for the regular meeting of August 19, 2021. Eligible voters are Mr. Bavai, Ms. Casper, Mr. Cristiano, and myself. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Hussar?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen, do we have any vouchers?
We have no vouchers.
Any correspondence?
I do. I had an email from Michael Herbert. He's the attorney for Wadsworth Development, which is on tonight's agenda. He has asked that this be rescheduled to November 4. They need to update their drainage plans in order to satisfy questions from the board engineer. He asked that an announcement be made at the beginning of this meeting that we're going to carry the application to November 4 so that no further notice is needed, and he granted an extension of time to the board to December 1 to act on this application.
Great. Steve, do you want to make a formal announcement on that?
Sure. If anybody's here tonight for case number SD 2998 Wadsworth Development LLC for preliminary major subdivision and estate bulk variance for block 3 lot 25 238 Ramtown Greenville Road, that application is being carried on notice to the board's regularly scheduled meeting of November 4, 2021, 7:00 PM, most likely via Zoom, but please keep track of where the board is at in November. But again, if you're here for Wadsworth Development, that application will not be heard tonight. It will be carried on notice to November 4. There'll be no further mail notice or, or published notice.
And as of right now, it is on Zoom, so. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Steve.
I have no other correspondence.
Okay, on to resolutions. The first is case number SP-1079F for 41 Kent Road LLC. It's a resolution granting final major site plan. Eligible voters, Mr. Bavai, myself, Ms. Casper, and Mr. Cristiano. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Paul. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Hussar?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
And the next and final resolution is case number SP-1091AATZ Holding LLC, a resolution granting submission waivers. Eligible voters are myself, Chief Kudrick, Councilwoman Richmond, and Mr. Tannenhouse. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome, welcome.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
We are on to submission waivers. Brian, you want me to keep going?
I'll take over if you want to be relieved, but you're doing a great job. All right. Thank you. Appreciate the, if, if, if I drop out, that means the internet, the power went back out, gone out four times already in the last hour. All right. My first submission waiver is case number SP-105A, New Jersey Natural Gas. Who do we have for counsel?
We have Nancy Skidmore is the attorney. Brian DeSina is the engineer.
Good evening, board members. Nancy Skidmore from Connell Foley. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, New Jersey Natural Gas Company. It's nice to see you all again. We are here for a submission waiver hearing this evening on our application for amended preliminary and final site plan approval for a previously approved 30,000 square foot training facility. You might recall that preliminary and final site plan approval with waiver relief was granted by this board in August of 2019. This application involves the addition of minor.
Ms. Skidmore, I don't mean to cut you off, but typically our attorney will just swear me in, and I'm happy to go through the submission waivers.
I, I do know. I was just going to give a little background that this, that we are asking for a number of submission waivers in light of the nature of this application.
At that point, I'd like to swear and learn, learn, raise your hand. Laura, do you swear from that any testimony provided before the board this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you so much.
So again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just as Ms. Skidmore just indicated, there are a number of submission waivers itemized in items of our report, but because this is an amended application, as was indicated, it previously got board approval back in 2019. These were, these are for various site changes or modifications. So because it is an amended application, I take no exception to the granting of these waivers for the purposes of deeming the application complete.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Can I ask a question?
Of course.
For, for procedures like this, where someone's amending an application, it's already been previously approved, is, is it just because our governing body decided to put the ordinance in place to go through this checklist scenario, or is there a way to fast-track this, this type of stuff?
No, so the checklist applies to all applications, whether it's an initial application or amended, but that would be the rationale to sort of grant the submission waiver relief is that it's amended and that most of these items were previously submitted as part of the initial application.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, motion to grant the submission waivers.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Hussar?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, next case is number SP for submission waivers is net case number SP-10929LLC.
And that's Mr. Pape's application, and he's in the meeting now. Although he's muted.
And video. Mr. Pape, not sure if you can hear us.
How's that? Am I in?
Yes, you are.
And, okay. Good evening, Mr. Chair, board members, board professionals. Kenneth Pape, on behalf of your applicant, Dime 9, this is a site plan that we're looking forward to present to you. But for this evening, we are asking for a number of design, of submission waivers, which have been submitted to Ms. Newman for comment. I think it's appropriate for me, it's a point to say, Ms. Newman, would you share with the board your, your position in our waiver request? Thank you.
Steve, you need to swear me in?
I think, Laura, because we swore you in, I think you're good for the night.
I'm good. I like it. I like it. Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we had actually issued an initial review of this where there were a bulk of submission waivers itemized. I had the opportunity to follow up with the design team because there were definitely items I wanted to see. The applicant has made a resubmission, which has drastically reduced the number of waivers. So for purposes of the board, I can represent they are now seeking a waiver of checklist item 53, which is the topography based upon the NAV 88 source. Checklist item 59, locationable wooded areas, stone roads, trees, railroads, isolated trees, four inches in diameter, and other natural or mammoth features beyond site limits. 86, maintenance and protection of traffic plan. 87, plans and profiles, cross-sections of streets, common driveways or private roads. And 88, profiles of utility layout, sanitary sewer, storm sewers, water main, gas, and electric. So because this is a private site and given the nature of the improvements, I have no issue with the granting of those waivers, and I am happy that the applicant's team did resubmit a lot of the other items I wanted to see.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, Brian.
Okay, thank you. You want a second?
Second, second.
Thank you.
Mr. Bavai?
Yes.
Mr. Hussar?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Thank you, all.
Have a good night, Mr. Pape.
I'm, I'm back.
You're back?
It's gonna be a few minutes, though, because I think the master plan hearing is first.
Very fine. Thank you. I'll mute.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the master plan hearing amendment to the conservation element of the master plan. I believe this is to discuss the NRI.
So, um, this is a conservation element, um, a new conservation element. The MLUL allows for a conservation plan element as one of, um, the elements that a municipality is able to adopt. Um, the last conservation plan was adopted in 2005 for Howell Township. Um, and this plan outlines how strategy is to protect the environment, um, and it's designed to function in concert with the other plan elements, most importantly, the land use plan. Um, it utilized information in the 2001, 2021, sorry, environmental resource inventory that was done earlier this year. Um, and the policies and strategies of the conservation plan seek to limit the impacts of development and retain the natural terrain and features to the greatest extent possible. Um, so the plan includes a number of strategies, policies and strategies relating to energy and air quality, forest resources and native vegetation, groundwater, scenic resources, stream corridors, surface water, threatened and endangered plant and animal species and wildlife. And then also talks about the relationship to the land use plan, um, and different resource protection strategies that the borough shouldn't implement or has been. Does anyone have any questions?
Just to confirm, if this does, if, if this is approved, the NRI then goes into the master plan?
Correct. Um, this plan element was created utilizing a lot of the information in the NRI, and the NRI is included as an appendix in this plan element.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Counselor, what is, what is our procedures here? Is this something we adopt? Do we just say we're in, if we feel it's in compliance? I, what's? This is something, since it's a, it's a, the, the planning board has total control over most aspects of the master plan, including this plan element. So it would be a motion to adopt the conservation plan element as prepared by the, by the planners. You might, since this is a public hearing, you might want to open up to members of the public. Um, that might be a good idea.
Okay, great. Thank you for the insight. Okay.
Eileen, we're gonna open to the public. You could please just give everybody the rules, and then as normal, we'll, we'll give it about a minute, minute and a half to see if anybody in the public has comment.
Okay. At this time, the chairman has opened the public hearing on the master plan element to the members of the public. If anyone has any questions or comments, use the Raise Your Hand feature. If you're on the phone, you can use star nine to raise or lower your hand, star six to mute or unmute yourself. And I do have someone with their hand up. Nancy, you have your hands up. We're trying to bring you into the hearing. I don't know if you're listening.
Nancy, you've been elevated. You'll have to unmute yourself, and if you have video, you can put that on, too. Nancy, do you have any questions or comments concerning the master plan element? Nancy, you raised your hand, so you've been elevated as a panelist. Do you have any questions or comments concerning the proposed master plan element adoption? Let me try it. Anybody else?
Any other members of the public that have questions or comments regarding the conservation element of the master plan, please use the Raise Your Hand feature. One second. I have Perry Mistrulla.
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah, the meetings have been cutting in and out for us, too.
Sorry, Mr. Mistrulla. Mr. Mistrulla, do you have any questions or comments? If you, if you're gonna be offering comment, we can swear you in, but if you're just asking questions, please do so.
No, I'd just like to make a comment.
Chairman, should we swear him in, or it's just? You should be just in case and also get his name and address as well. We're gonna swear he went, Mr. Mistrulla.
You have video?
Yeah, that, I lost that also. It, it never came back after a couple of times of rebooting. So I just have the audio, but I'm raising my hand. I promise.
Okay, great. Mr. Mistrulla, do you swear from the testimony you provide before the board this evening will be the truth?
Yes, it will.
Can you please give us, is your name spelled correctly on the Zoom? M-A-S-T-R-O-L-A?
That's perfect.
And can you please give us your address?
250 Bennett Road.
Thank you. Thank you.
The only comment I'd have is, I thank you to the board members for serving. I, I appreciate that for the Township of Howell and the residents here. I, I was also a member back in the last century, so I understand it's a big job, and I appreciate that. My, my comment there was, is that, is that addition to the master plan now another section that will include environmental? Or I thought we already had that in there already. Can you explain that to me exactly?
Yeah, so there is a conservation plan element that was prepared in 2005 and I believe adopted in early 2006, but this is a, a new plan element since that one is 15 years old.
Oh, I got it. Okay, yeah, that, that'd be fine. I just knew that there was one, and this is just in a updated version or something like that. Okay, that was the only thing I had. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Does anybody else raising their hand, Eileen?
I have no one else raising their hand at the moment. Anyone else that has questions or comments, please use the Raise Your Hand feature. The chairman will give it a minute. Otherwise, he'll close this portion of the hearing. I don't have anyone raising their hand.
Okay, if there's no further public comment or question, I guess it would be time to deliberate and. We'll close, we'll close the public portion. Ms. Bell, the only comment that I would, I would give, um, and, and before we, we release this to the public, is toward, towards the back, there's a nice list of all of the preserved acres that's, that's been preserved over the years. There's no total associated with that spreadsheet. I think it may be prudent to show the total unless it's buried somewhere in the text, and I just missed it. You're muted.
Sorry. Um, I believe that is part of the ERI document that's just been put in as an appendix. That was, um, not prepared as part of the plan element. It was just included as part of it. Um, that's certainly something, you know, we can look into and put in that number if it fits somewhere in, but I don't really want to, um, alter the ERI because that was not prepared by the document.
Fair enough, yeah. It could be put into the body somewhere. That would be my only comment. Anybody else has any comments? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Brian, I think it's important to acknowledge the Environmental Commission for doing another ERI, getting the, uh, I'm not sure if it was done by Grant this time. I know the first time it was done by Grant, but recognizing the Environmental Commission and thanking the chairman, Paul Bavai, for making sure this got done, and Jennifer Beam for making this a priority. And, uh, Jennifer Beam for making this a priority, getting this into the master plan.
Thank you. Yes, I would agree. Very much appreciated. I know the Environmental Commission spent a lot of time and effort, energy on that. Anybody else have any other comments? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt this element into the master plan.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Sorry, who was that? Uh, Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bivai. Did we lose your voice again?
On me?
Okay. Yes or no?
Oh, I didn't hear you. I didn't hear you ask me, but absolutely yes.
Thank you. Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to applications. Case number, um, Eileen, which case, I, I've missed part of it. Which case is off the agenda tonight?
Wadsworth Development. That was the first one listed on the agenda.
Okay.
They were carried to November fourth with no further notice.
Okay, thank you. All right, next case is S P dash one zero eight four Black Rock Enterprises.
That is Mr. Pape's case. And Mr. Pape is in the hearing.
Good evening and, um, Mrs. Robano. There's a number of professional witnesses and Rip, thank you so much.
I have your list. I'm moving them in now.
I see. I thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the board, board professionals, all good evening. Kenneth Pape of the firm, Heilbrun Pape, on behalf of Black Rock Enterprises. This is an application requesting permission to repurpose an industrial complex on Fairfield Road. The, it appears that the, the three buildings on this property are over fifty years old. And for many years were used by the Saker family as part of their shop right operation, as well as other businesses as tenants. Um, it was used as a shipping and distribution. It was also used for fabrication. It was used for equipment and material storage. Uh, it had a lot of uses over the years. And our client is asking that it be his corporate headquarters and his business location. And we'll be pleased to describe his business to you. He is a civil contractor engaged in concrete work, asphalt work and utility installation. Before we begin the substantive presentation, I would ask if you could acknowledge receipt of our notices and confirm that the board has jurisdiction to hear this this evening.
The notices have been checked and they are correct.
Thank you.
In order.
Thank you very much. The, our client purchased this property, uh, a year ago. And prior to purchasing it, we had met with Mr. Howard to make certain that his use was in fact a permitted use at the site. And Mr. Howard memorialized that in, in a response letter indicating it was a permitted use, but it was not the same use that had been operated for fifty plus years and therefore site plan application was required. And that is what we intend to present to you this evening. The presentation will be made by Michael Waselowski. He's a professional engineer at Mid-Atlantic Engineering. As the design engineer, we also have Scott Kennel, who is our traffic expert. The board is, I believe, most familiar with Mr. Kennel's testimony. We have Steve Radosi, the design architect, and Julie Kobeski of, uh, Malillo and Bauer as the landscape architect. And before we begin the presentation, I would ask if the board would allow me just a few moments to share with you what we have been doing over the past year before presenting this application to you. Um, as I'm sure that you can anticipate, we went to the, the Environmental Commission, we went to the fire chief. We have county planning board final approval. We are working our way through the freehold soil application. This property does not have a water supply. We have made application to bring water down the street, so it will have a water supply. That application was presented to Mr. Nunziata, who has reviewed, uh, for, for preliminary approval. We, all of those steps were taken before we approached this board. The, the goal was to take a site that had utility, but was getting a little tired and to make it an attractive feature on the roadway and also to create utility for our client. There, we started with a single driveway, working with Fire Chief Lewis, we created a double driveway so that the site functions, um, safer, so that there's better ingress and egress. Working with your professionals, we created a stormwater management system. It's funny how I say we, I had nothing to do with it. Mr. Waselowski and his team had everything to do with it. But they worked with Laura and I watched and, and this, they created a stormwater system, a modern stormwater system where there is none. The landscaping that is on the property is old. It's not really landscaping anymore. So it's kind of overgrown. This is, we did, and I was part of this. We did meet with Shari on the site, walked the entire site, determined what was worth saving and what should be removed. And then we asked Ms. Julie Kobeski to come in. And the instructions that we gave were to create a front lawn that looked like a corporate headquarters. And I would be pleased to present that to you. We also asked Ms., Ms. Beam if she would meet us at the site. And she did spend a morning with Mr. Steve Radosi and with me. At the site, we went through all of the buildings and the goal was, the buildings are not features right now. They're, 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 they're a little tired. And the goal was to make the first building a very attractive building. And then to create a landscaping around it so that it was a feature from the road. And to take the two rear buildings and clean them up. They're an un, an uninteresting blue with very little bit of trim. And working with Ms. Beam, you'll see that the buildings are now a soft taupe color with, with architectural features. There is a, um, a, a grounding element to the, to the buildings and generally a complete cleanup. So I wanted, I think, I think it's important for the board to know just how much work went into working, your applicant working with all the agencies and your applicant working with your professionals before we're here tonight. And with that, I would ask if we could introduce Mr. Waselowski, have his, have him sworn and his credentials placed on the record and we're ready to begin this substantive presentation.
Mr. Waselowski, please raise your right hand. You swear from the testimony provided before the board this evening will be the truth?
I do.
The spelling of your name on the Zoom correct?
Yes.
Okay, can you give us your business address for the record, please?
Sure, it's a, uh, five Commerce Way, Suite two hundred, Hamilton, New Jersey, zero eight six nine one. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Mr. Waselowski, please take a few moments to share with all of us your education and professional background.
Certainly. I graduated from the College of New Jersey in two thousand and four with a bachelor's of science in mechanical engineering. I am currently a project manager with Mid-Atlantic Engineering Partners. I have a professional engineer's license in the state of New Jersey. And I have provided testimony in front of land use boards in the state of New Jersey, including this board.
Mr. Chair, oh, Mr. Waselowski, are you, is your license current and in good standing on this date?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, may I ask that Mr. Waselowski be permitted to testify this evening as a professional engineer?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Waselowski, I'm going to ask that you introduce your exhibits to the board. Let's go through the three exhibits and make sure that they are properly described. And after all three are described, we'll go back to the first one and begin your substantive testimony. Can, can we screen share, Mrs. Robano?
You can, if that's easier.
Is it, Michael?
Yes, I believe I have that capability.
If not, I can do it.
Okay, hopefully right now everyone is seeing an aerial image. Great. Okay, this is my.
This is just a brief description.
My first exhibit tonight is number eight nineteen in accordance with the exhibit list that was circulated. It is titled Existing Aerial. This is in higher altitude aerial image showing the subject property outlined in red and the immediate surrounding area. My second exhibit this evening is numbered eight twenty, titled Existing Site Aerial. And it is a more zoomed in aerial image of the property to better display the existing conditions. And finally, the third exhibit that I will present tonight is numbered eight twenty-one, titled Site Rendering, and it's simply a card rendering of the project site.
And so that the record is complete, all of these exhibits were forwarded to Mrs. Robano a minimum of two days before tonight's hearing as required by the governor's order.
Yes, they were, and they were marked into evidence. Thank you.
Thank you. So if we could go to A nineteen, your first exhibit. And I'm going to ask that with that exhibit, uh, if you could take us around the neighborhood.
Sure. And the subject property outlined in red is known as Block one seventy-seven, Lot thirty-one. Located within the special economic development or S E D zone. The property has frontage along the commercial industrial area of Fairfield Road and is directly across from Bennett Road. The site is located about halfway between NJ Route thirty-three to the north outside of the view here and Tanny Route five twenty-four to the south. Existing commercial and industrial development is bordering the property on the north and south sides. To the rear or east is an abandoned New Jersey Transit Railroad right of way. And to the west, on the other side of Fairfield Road, are existing agricultural and residential properties.
We could go to the aerial that's closer. And I'll ask that you similarly describe conditions that exist on the site today.
Certainly, I've, I've now changed to number eight twenty, Existing Site Aerial. The five point two acre parcel is previously developed with the three aluminum buildings that you see here. Access is proposed, or excuse me, exists via a single driveway located at the southern frontage of Fairfield Road. Uh, entering this driveway brings you eastward into the site where one would traverse the existing asphalt and concrete areas. The site appears to have been developed fifty or so years ago and generally has not been well maintained. The asphalt surfaces are in disrepair. The vegetation is overgrown and of low quality. There is no stormwater management system. The lighting is outdated. And as Mr. Pape also described, the vehicular circulation is somewhat sub-sendered.
So with that as our, with, with, with that as the canvas, I'm going to ask if you could take us to your third exhibit. And I'm going to ask for, not a detail, the detail we'll do together, you know, question and answer. But I'm going to ask that you do an executive summary of what you have designed as enhancements to the site.
Certainly. Now, I'm again presenting A twenty-one, the site rendering. Uh, as Mr. Pape described, the project will repurpose and revitalize the existing site and its infrastructure. Uh, some of our project goals here were, one, to implement a stormwater management system. Two, to provide safe and efficient vehicular circulation, largely by the addition of a second driveway located at the northern Fairfield Road frontage that allows a counterclockwise loop to function on the property. It was also our goal to modernize the lighting system and create an aesthetically attractive streetscape along Fairfield Road.
Think if we could go through some of the very, this, the statutory specific elements of a site plan, um, with the board. And, um, there are a couple that will, will, I'll ask that you do some introductory testimony, knowing that other professionals will be doing in-depth testimony. But if we could start with grading, we have a site that is completely developed currently. Buildings exist, parking exists. Um, is there much that you need to do to regrade this property to accommodate these improvements?
There is not.
Okay. And Mr. Waselowski, I know that there's a, a ridge, a very slight ridge towards the middle of the property, running north, south, and that some of the stormwater goes towards Fairfield and some goes towards the New Tran, New Jersey Transit. Um, I trust that you've left the grading in place so that this, that drainage pattern is unchanged.
That's correct.
If you could, um, for the stormwater management, you begin with no stormwater management. And rather than ask that you describe in a great detail all of the elements, I'm going to ask that you answer these important questions. Are you familiar with and did you follow the township's ordinance for stormwater management design?
I am familiar with them. Yes, we did.
And are you familiar with and did you follow the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection stormwater design criteria?
Yes.
And are you comfortable advising this board that you have designed this to be compliant with both of those standards?
Yes, I am.
There's also, uh, this stormwater system that you have designed, I believe, is, is intended to be a private system. If we could confirm on the record that the system creates no burden or responsibility on the township to maintain the stormwater system. And that is intended to be designed for private maintenance.
Yes, I can confirm that statement.
If I may, Mr. Chair and Board members, notwithstanding that the burden is on the property owner to maintain the system, we acknowledge that the township has the right to enter to make certain that it continues to function properly. And I'm going to ask if you are familiar with the most recent report released by CME of September fourteenth. And, and particularly with regard to the technical requirements on stormwater design, have you reviewed those?
Yes, I have.
I asked if you would before this meeting, I know that there's been many times that you've met with the towns engineers, but I asked that you, in the twenty-four hours before the hearing, speak with a representative from CME uh, about those points to make certain that you and CME were clearly on the same page and did you do so?
We did exactly that.
And you're comfortable advising the board you can and you will address those technical requirements?
Yes.
So there's also another stat, statutory element is site is, is, is the circulation on site. And in your introduction, you briefly described it, but I'm going to ask, uh, we, what, we, you, a member of your firm and I met with Fire Chief Lewis, who gave us instructions and, uh, ultimately reviewed these plans and rendered a report. If I could begin with, are these plans consistent with the instructions that were given to your company by Fire Chief Lewis?
Yes.
And you're aware that the vehicles that will circulate on site are articulated tractor trailers and firefighting vehicles? Can you confirm that the templates for those vehicles have been, um, laid down on the plan? And that this, this site plan accommodates those vehicles?
Yes.
And the, the original plan had a parking lot behind the executive, the, the front building, which was really kind of in the way of where trucks circulate. If you could identify where the parking facility for the, that building is located, um, in your redesign?
Certainly, as Mr. Pape described, the existing parking lot is located on the east side of that office building. It is now located on the north side of that building closer to Fairfield Road.
And you, that connected to the building by a sidewalk system?
Yes.
And from your perspective, the parking is consistent with ordinance design?
Yes.
The, the, there's one driveway that is not the full thirty feet in width. I know that the fire chief was satisfied with it. If you could indicate where there's a twenty-five foot wide driveway?
Certainly, that twenty-five foot span is located to the north of these two buildings from approximately here to here.
And that's the portion behind the buildings that's designated as a, a one-way circulation?
That's right.
So I'm going to ask the same question of Mr. Kennel, but from a design engineer's perspective, is that twenty-five foot cartway adequate for the anticipated movements that will be going through that area?
Yes, it is.
I'm going to go to landscaping. In the report of CME, there's a comments about landscaping that were commenting on the plan that was prepared by your office. And those comments came out, I believe, prior to the opportunity to review Ms. Kobeski's plan. So I think that we'll, we'll take the landscaping off of your shoulders and we'll have Julie address it a little bit later. But I would like you to talk about the lighting. There are comments in the staff report that would make the lighting better than it's been designed. If you could indicate what you've already done and what we're prepared to do to address the comments of CME.
Certainly, as I had previously mentioned, one of our initial goals was to modernize the lighting system. That essentially includes removal of the existing fixtures and introduction, addition of all LED fixtures.
So one of the requests was that all of the fixtures be LED and that they will be on site? Is that correct? And were all of the lights, are all of the lights designed in a manner so that there is not off premises spillage of our lighting?
That's correct.
So through the combination of the light fixture design and back shields, you can confirm there's no spillage?
I can confirm no spillage. That's right.
And we've got industrial neighbors who might not be bothered so much by it, but we will not have lighting spillage. But I'll ask if you could, signage, I know that in the front yard, there's currently a small, I don't know if you'd call it a monument, maybe a wooden monument sign. And on your plan, you show a monument sign. If you could just speak to its location.
Certainly. The existing sign is located right here. That sign would be removed and replaced with a proposed ordinance compliant monument style sign.
In your detail, in your plans, there is a detail of that sign?
Yes, there is.
And if you could just, so the location, the height, the size, all completely compliant with the ordinance?
Yes.
And Mr. Chair members of the board, it's a modest sign. It just identifies Blackrock Enterprises as the sole tenant at the site and would also have the address on it for nine-one-one safety purposes. So I'm going to ask if you made yourself familiar with the CME report of September fourteenth in its entirety?
I have.
And are there any elements that are brought to your attention in that report that you cannot address that you want to ask the board for relief?
No, we will address the comments within that memo.
I have nothing further of Mr. Westaloski. Oh, I do, I do. The Health Department issued a report and asked, and in the Health Department's report, one, they acknowledged that we would be bringing the water supply and asked that we properly decommission the well or use it for irrigation purposes. And on behalf of the applicant, I will state that we will do so. And the second was to confirm that the septic system locations on the site would be protected from any asphalt or concrete surfaces. And I know that you've taken steps in that direction. Would you share that with the board?
Certainly. So as Mr. Pape mentioned, there are no asphalt surfaces proposed over any of the existing septic systems. And to prevent any vehicular traffic from going over those systems, we have introduced bollards to protect.
Mr. Chair, I have nothing further direct of Mr. Westaloski. He is available to your board members and professionals for examination at this time.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Mr. Pape. Do any of our board members or professionals have any questions or comments?
I just have two questions. One, with regards to the warehouses, are there any floor drains that lead to the septic systems?
I do not believe that there are any connections of the buildings to the septic system. And if I might, Mr. Hazard, calling them warehouses, I think might be a misnomer. One of them is, functions as a garage and one of them functions where all that other stuff happened, fabrication, storage, there was some distribution. Mister, our client's use of the building would not be a warehouse. It would be, one would continue to be the garage building and the other would be his storage building.
Okay.
For himself. Yeah.
Or are there any floor drains in the buildings other than sanitary, like for restrooms?
I do not know, Mr. Hazard. I'll get you the answer, but I do not know.
Okay.
If there's, if you're looking for confirmation that floor drains are not connected to the septic system, we'll run that test and confirm it.
That'd be great. And where the diesel tanks are, are there bollards around those?
Michael?
I'm assuming and to confirm, if there are not, there will be.
Yeah. We are familiar with the requirements for above-ground fuel tanks. We will abide by all of those requirements, both from the fire safety and construction perspective.
Thank you.
My only question, Mr. Pape, is I see here in our packet shade tree, ask for a Woodlands Management Plan. Is that something that is warranted?
I would, I turn to, if I might, I didn't see Shari with us tonight. Is she?
Shari is not here tonight.
Oh, then I turn to Ms. Newman, if she would. Because it's substantially, it is substantially an improved site. The only trees that we are proposing to remove are ones that were reviewed by Shari in the field and deemed to be low-quality trees that should be removed. And then we have a very substantial landscape plan. So I'd ask for the formal requirement of Woodland Management Plan to be waived based on Shari's comments on our revised landscape.
Thank you.
But I'd ask Ms. Newman if she agrees.
Mr. Chairman, I can confirm that the app has met with Shari in the field, both on the removal of certain trees and then on their Birmingham landscape plan, and Shari was in fact satisfied.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions? If not, we'll move on to Mr. Pape's next witness.
Very fine. So the next witness that will be testifying is going to be Mr. Radosti. Mr. Radosti was brought in to work with, to work with Ms. Beam. I've become familiar with Mr. Radosti from his testimony, but I think it's appropriate for him to be sworn and the credentials placed on the record this evening.
Mr. Radosti, please raise your hand. You swear from the testimony provided before the board this evening will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, your last name is R A D O S T I?
That is correct.
And what is your business address, sir?
My address is three seven nine Princeton Heights Town Road, Cranbury, New Jersey, zero eight five one two.
Thank you very much.
Just, Mr. Radosti, please take the time necessary to share your education and professional background with the board.
Certainly. So I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I graduated New Jersey into of technology in nineteen ninety-two with a Bachelor of Architecture degree. I've a principal at Perez and Radosti Associates. I became a licensed architect in nineteen ninety-six. And I've practiced in front of dozens of, I presented in front of dozens of boards throughout, say, New Jersey, including this board.
And your license is in good standing tonight?
That is correct.
Mr. Chair, may he testify as an architect this evening?
Yes, we'll accept his credentials.
Thank you. So Mr. Radosti and I met with Ms. Beam Zoom, and then actually in the field, and we spent the morning with her walking through the buildings, taking photos of the buildings and recording Ms. Beam's comments. I'm going to ask if you would, are you prepared to share, screen share, Steve?
Yes, yes, I am.
One of the things that we asked Steve to do was to, to take photographs of the building to give the sense of the building's current condition. And then to show by comparison, the improvements that are suggested for each of those buildings. So if we could begin with the building that's closest to Fairfield Road, and if you could zoom into the existing picture so that the board can see what's there, and then take us through the improvements that you propose.
Okay, so I have here, this is exhibit A sixteen, which are architectural drawings with photo inserts. And these are dated nine fifteen twenty-one. There's actually four sheets under this exhibit. This is sheet SK one, but I also have SK two, SK three, and SK four. I'd like to start. And so I have here a photo of the front of building number one as seen from the street. I'm very familiar with the three buildings as I've been to the site several times and have been at all the buildings multiple times and measured the façades. The three buildings are prefabricated metal shop office buildings and storage structures with a steel structure and a steel panel skin. All three buildings are one-story and are aesthetically in need of some work. The buildings have, buildings currently have a chalky faded blue vertical metal siding. Zoom in a little bit more here. And as you can see, there's some rust shown there. And then it also has a slightly rusty, low-pitched standing sea metal roof. Some of the existing gutters and downspouts are also damaged or missing. In general, the buildings are not attractive, and I thought that it would be very important to improve their looks. So I met with the planner, Jennifer Bean, on site to discuss how we can improve the aesthetics of the three buildings. And we came to a conclusion of what would be best. I'm going to start here on building one. So that's building one from the street. And now I have here the front facade of building one as seen from the street. And since this building is visible from the road, we decided to do the most work on this building. We decided to remove and replace the old blue siding and add a new French gray colored siding and a darker earth tone siding at the base of the wall to add some visual interest. We also want to replace the rusted metal roofing and add a new muted green color metal roofing and new gutters and downspouts. The existing building had no metal eaves, so our plan was to add a horizontal cornice to conceal the gutters and to provide an aesthetic cap with a nice shadow line along the top of the building. Since some of this will be visual above the landscaping. We also wanted to add decorative metal columns that I show here. And these provide vertical elements at the elevation to break up the low horizontal facade. So it adds a little verticality to it. We also plan on adding twelve-inch-high non-internally illuminated street murals at the upper right-hand corner. So the street address could be visible on the building. And we worked with the landscape architect Julie Kobeski. So the landscaping plan in the buildings are coordinated. And then we took those same finishes and we wrapped those same finishes around the side elevations, the south elevation, the north elevation, and around to the east where the front entrances. On the, on this east elevation, we added a new portico entranceway at the front door. So we got rid of the old roof and we added new columns that would match the decorative columns that we have in the front. And we added a new roof there with the same muted green color. There was also an overhead door in this area that we removed. And then we added new windows and we closed in the area with matching colored siding. So basically, our finishes would wrap around all four elevations of the building, making it look like a new building again.
So if I could, and not to take away from that eloquent testimony, we got rid of an ugly blue building. We introduced a soft gray and a charcoal gray combination with an accent of a soft green color that was used sparingly just for accents throughout the building. And you created a, although the front of the building is not facing the road, you made a front entranceway, an attractive entrance where there wasn't one. Fairly accurate?
I think that's a great summary, yes.
Okay, I like yours. If you could take us to the back building and just share with all how those buildings were handled.
Okay.
And I think it's very important that the board see an aerial, or see a photo just to, so they can see how that building's hardly visible from the roadway, except maybe at the very top.
So I have here, this is sheet SK two of the same exhibit. And what we're showing is an existing view from the south elevation of building number two. So building number two is the largest of the three buildings. And it's pretty much just as unattractive as the others. The building has the same chalky blue siding and has some damage or missing gutters and downspouts. Also, the roof is rusted, but you can't really see the roof in this photo here. And the top of the building is slightly visible from the front of the property. So we decided to add some new, some new features there. So let's go to them here. So we have at the bottom here. So we have here the same elevation. What we decided to do is we added new extended, extended eaves off the top to add a shadow line. We had a new fascia, new gutters and new downspouts, since the building was missing a lot of them and it wasn't adequate. We also decided to paint the siding to match the same new siding that we had at the front building. So this building, the siding of this building were repaired and painted. And then we'd have also the new roof. We'd also be painting the doors and the overhead doors that we have here. And since, since this building is four feet out of the ground, unlike the front building for the loading docks, there's an exposed concrete foundation. And that gave us, gave the opportunity to add a brick veneer water table that will appear to anchor the building to the ground, give it a nice, a nice presence there. So we have this brick water table that we added at the bottom course that goes up approximately four feet. And then we followed that same brick water table and the paint colors and the new fascia around the other elevations of the building. So here are two, I have the other two elevations, since this building's relatively big, I have the other elevations on another sheet. Let's see. So I have here the west elevation and the north elevation where we followed the same brick veneer and replaced the siding, or excuse me, repaired and painted the siding, put new fascia boards, new rake boards, and painted the existing roof.
Before you move to the third building, I'm going to ask if Mr. Westaloski could put up his A twenty one, just so the board can see where this building is on the site that we're discussing. Can you help us out with that, Mr. Westaloski?
Certainly.
Just briefly. So all that work that you just described is the building right there in the middle of the site? That, right, Steve?
That is correct.
So that the architectural interest along the top of the building, some portions of that would be facing Bennett Road and would be, there'd be some limited visibility. It doesn't look like much else of that building's going to be visible from the roadway.
Not so much. Maybe, maybe a slight corner of the building or the upper portion, that's about it.
Okay. If we could, so the, so the third building that you're about to describe is the one behind that. And if we could, I think, just point out how the third building is lower than the middle building. And then if you could take us through that, if you could bring your SK three and SK four up, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
So I have here sheet SK four, which is part of that same exhibit, and I'm just going to zoom in to, alright, so here's the existing view of the building from the south elevation. So this is a lower building than building two. It's approximately twenty-two feet, two inches in height from the grade. It's a long, low building. And this one has standing, this one has steel metal siding that goes from the eve all the way to the ground, no visible foundation. As you could see, the blue siding is starting to rust in some cases. In addition, this building has no gutters, no downspouts whatsoever, and that's probably the reason for the rust on some of the facade. In addition to that, there are In addition to that, there are seven translucent panels along the facade on the south elevation and the north elevation. And the, the reason for those was to give natural light into the building. But as you could see, they're, they're pretty discolored at this time. So our plan, our plan is to provide new gutters and downspouts and to repaint and repair the existing siding and roofing so that this building matches buildings two and three. You can see here's the same elevation, but we'd be repairing and painting the existing roof with this muted green color. The seven translucent panels, we'd be replacing with new panels that, that would give more natural light to the inside of the building and wouldn't be faded. And we, and at the base of the building, we'd be adding a water table with painted metal siding to match the color of the brick veneer of building two and the water table that we have at building one. We would be taking those same colors and treatments around four, all four elevations of the building.
Mr. Rudasty, thank you for that description. Mr. Chair and Board members, I'll tell you that it, it may sound simple and, and Mr. Rudasty may have been able to describe it in a very clear manner. But that was hours and hours of work with Ms. Beam going around the buildings, coming up with a scheme. And then Mr. Rudasty had to carry it out. No, Ms. Beam's not here tonight to yell at him, but I do think that she would say that she's pleased. And I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that Ms. Bell is, is in a position to, to share that comment. Mr. Rudasty, when you were finished with these plans, did you present them to Ms. Beam?
Uh, yes, I did. I, I presented them to Ms. Bean and I asked her about her opinion of it. And she said, if, you know, that what we did, what we discussed on site, that she'd be happy with it.
So we believe that we have addressed the concerns raised by Ms. Bean. Mr. Chair and Board members, I have nothing further of Mr. Rudasty. He is available to all for examination.
Thank you, Mr. Pate. Isabelle, do you have any further comments?
No, I spoke with Jen about the architectures and she's fine with them. She appreciates, appreciates all the work the applicant put into making them something that's more visually appealing.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
Does anybody from the board have any other further comments? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Pate?
Sure, sure. Our third witness is Julie Kobeski. Julie is a landscape architect. I say a landscape architect extraordinaire with Malillo and Bauer. We, we asked her to, to create something special in the front yard. And I hope that you find that's what she did. Ms. Kobeski, could we, could we have her sworn and then we'll go to her, her credentials?
Ms. Kobeski, please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you provide before the board this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, and K O B E S K Y at Malillo and Bauer.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Kobeski, take a few moments and share with us your education and your professional background.
I am a 2004 graduate of Penn State University where I received a Bachelor of Landscape Architecture degree. I've been working at Malillo Bauer Carmen since 2004 and I currently hold the position of Associate within that firm. I am a licensed landscape architect within the state of New Jersey and I have appeared before a number of boards within the state, including this board.
Acceptable, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Pate.
Fine. Ms. Kobeski, I'm going to ask if, are you, I'm prepared to screen share your, your plans. Okay. So we had asked Ms. Kobeski to be mindful of the improvements that Mr. Rudasty was making to the building and to coordinate with that building. I'm going to ask if you could present your plan to the board and if you could identify the features and elements of that planning.
Um, our efforts focused on what we've been referring to as the front yard of the site. So that's the area that's located along Fairfield Road between the two driveways entering and exiting the site. So you can see this area that's rendered in the site plan. And our overall goal for this was to provide an attractive landscape that frames views into the newly enhanced corporate headquarters. So we began with providing a simple palette of flowering shrubs along the foundation of the newly enhanced office building. We have ornamental trees located at the corners of the building planted within pockets of flowering perennials. And this helps to soften the lines of the building while, while enhancing the architecture. And it also picks up on the rolling bedlines of the three planted islands that are located within the open lawn area. These islands are set below the canopies of the two mature shade trees that will remain on site, which you can see right here. These planted islands provide year round interest with evergreen trees and shrubs, ornamental trees and also flowering perennials. And these islands, we, we located them in a staggered fashion, allowing for filtered views across the lawn and into the site while still maintaining somewhat of a planted buffer at the corners for the, the residential properties. Shade trees are located at 30 feet on center, providing a nice canopy along Fairfield Road. And ornamental grasses and flowering annuals help to enhance the project signage. While developing the, the landscape plan for, for the site, we focused on providing deer resistant planting as, as a large goal of ours and also providing multi-season interest. And we feel that the planting really helps to create an attractive feature within the community. We've also prepared a sheet that has some, some rendered three dimensional graphics. So view one that you can see here is taken from the northern corner of the site. And this reflects the lush planting, a little bit, and multi-season interest that we're providing. So you can see that we have flowering trees tucked throughout the landscape and pockets of flowering perennials, all set against a backdrop of evergreen trees that help to, again, create some filtered views into the site. And then view two is taken from the intersection of Bennett Road looking into the site. And this view again helps to, to show the layered effect of the planting that we're showing, where we have multi-season interest with ornamental trees and flowering perennials. All again, against a backdrop of, of evergreen trees, but with the staggered effect so that we're not creating a wall of planting, but rather planting that, that really enhances the site and provides views into it. That, that concludes the, the landscape design we've prepared.
And Ms. Kobeski, if you could share with the board, have you gone through these plans? Maybe multiple iterations of these plans with Ms. Spiro?
We did provide the plans to Ms. Spiro and, and I had a conversation and we, we did take into account a couple of comments that she had in.
I know that she had some changes of plant material and you will accommodate those directions.
Absolutely.
One of the comments that Ms. Spiro raised was the introduction of berms. And we could, we, we could introduce berms and we're looking at the board as to whether you wanted to see them. We saw this as a, as a, an opportunity to have a nice front lawn area. We weren't really looking to hide. We, what we were looking to do was to, to filter and to frame the building. But if the board wanted to see berms added as additional elements to landscaping, it could be done in the front yard. If you could confirm, Ms. Kobeski, that you could add berms if that was a request.
Absolutely. We can work berms into the, the planted beds that we are showing if, if it's desired.
And, and we do not, we do not presuppose that our view is the right view. Just wanted to share with you, our goal was to create this attractive building that was visible from the road and, and the landscaping was, was there to filter it and to frame it. But we, we could add berming if requested. I have nothing further of Ms. Kobeski and she is available to you for examination.
Thank you, Mr. Pate. Does anybody have any comments? Does anybody want to weigh in on the berming? I, I, I don't see any need for it.
I agree. It's a nice plan, Brian. Very nice plan. Nice job.
Okay. Does any of our professionals wish to make any comments? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Pate, does that summarize, does that wrap up all of your?
One more, one more, and, and I'll ask him to be succinct. But Scott Kennel is our traffic expert. His assistance throughout this was invaluable. I'm going to ask if we could have his credentials, have him sworn, we'll share his credentials briefly and go right to his testimony.
Okay, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Kennel. Do you swear from the testimony you provide before the board this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. It's K E N N E L and you're with McDonough Ray?
That's correct.
Thank you so much.
Located at 1431 Lakewood Road, Manasquan. For the board's benefit, I've testified many times before this board as well as the zoning board, but I'm a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates with over 35 years of traffic and transportation planning experience. I've testified in over a thousand applications in over 100 municipalities. And I've been accepted by the New Jersey Superior Court as a traffic expert.
Acceptable, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kennel, I, I, perhaps Mr. Weselowski, if we could have A21 in front of the board as, as the testimony unfolds. Mr. Kennel, I have a, a couple of points. Fairfield Road in front of our client's property is, is generally flat and straight so that the visibility from each of those driveways is, is adequate?
Yes, the, it, it's posted for 45 miles per hour. And we have the site distance that complies with industry standards to provide safe and efficient movement to and from the site.
The two driveway system that is introduced, I'd ask if you could weigh in and compare it to the one driveway system that existed?
Yes, in my opinion, this is a substantial improvement for access to the site. The current site has a driveway that does not comply with the township standard of 30 foot width. So it is narrow in, in its current condition. And basically providing two 30 foot wide driveways enhances accessibility to the site, which will expect to have many large wheelbase vehicles. And also the way the site has been designed with the one-way flow on, on the northbound side promotes positive counter circulation traffic flow, particularly for the large wheelbase vehicles.
I asked Mr. Mr. Weselowski for his opinion as to the adequacy and location of parking onsite. I'm going to ask if you would similarly comment on, on saying?
Yes, the parking is well distributed to accommodate the needs of Black Rock Industries. So it's appropriately designed to accommodate the parking associated with the three buildings onsite.
Sometimes you've got a lot to say, I think, tonight, describing the improvements and the adequacy of the driveways is, is, is just about all that we need to hear. But I, at this point, before Mr. Kennel leaves, I, with the authority given to me by Mr. Derocha, your applicant who is listening, will share with you that this is a business that's existed in the Derocha family for 30 plus years. Mr. Derocha and his father worked the business together for the first 20 or so. And as with his father's retirement, he and his sister continued it. It's a family business. This is not like a Stavola or a Belgium. It's not a very large company. During the summer season, there may be 75 employees. They have approximately 35 vehicles and about the same number of pieces of equipment. It's a small, it's a small business operation with two or three office workers. And during the day, a maximum, over all the years, a maximum of four employees in the garage building. Typically, there's 10 or 15 trucks leaving in the morning and the 10 or 15 trucks coming back in the afternoon. And during the rest of the day, it's crickets. There's not much going on. Trucks don't come back and forth. There's occasionally someone may come back for a part or materials. All of the drivers who are operating Mr. Derocha's vehicles are professional drivers, experienced professional drivers moving the vehicles in and out of, of the site. So we don't know the whole history of all the uses that were there. But when we look at the site, we can see lots and lots of tractors and trailers and we can see buildings that are filled with, with carpentry and equipment and everything that seems to go with a grocery store. What we're proposing here is the middle building would be storage of materials that are, should not be out in the weather. The back building would be the garage maintenance building and the front building would be the corporate headquarters. With that, Mr. Kennel, is it your opinion that the traffic that would be generated by this site would be a very, a moderate, low generator of traffic?
Yes, it would. And as it was presented in our March 8, 2021 traffic report, that the driveways are expected to operate at a level service B or average delay of 10 to 12 seconds with consideration for future traffic growth as well as site specific traffic from the New Jersey National Gas Training Facility to the north as well as the rock solid warehouse that was recently approved at approximately 368,000 square feet. So with all that taken into consideration and with the fact, fact, we're going to have two, two-way driveway serving the site. It's my opinion that the driveways can operate safely and efficiently.
Mr. Chair, I have nothing further of Mr. Kennel. Again, he is available to your professionals and to the board for examination.
Thank you, Mr. Pate. Any of our professionals or anybody from the board wish to make any comments? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Pate?
Mr. Chair, that concludes the applicant's direct presentation. I, before the evening is concluded, I would ask for an opportunity for a brief summation. But I believe that the testimony of the applicant's witnesses clearly demonstrates the commitment that Mr. Derocha has made to Howell and the goals that he has for this site.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Eileen, we're going to open it up to the public. If you can please give them the instructions on how they can raise their hand or unmute their phones. And then we'll give them about a minute or so to respond.
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up to members of the public for any questions or comments on the Black Rock Enterprises application. If you have any questions or comments, please use the raise your hand feature. If you're calling in, you can use star nine to raise or lower your hand, star six to mute and unmute yourself. The chairman will give someone a minute or so to raise their hand. And if we can't see anyone, we'll close the public portion.
Thank you. Okay, about 8:32 and 30 seconds.
Hello? Hello?
Mr. Mastrola?
Oh, I didn't see the hand. There's no.
Do you want to, do you want to offer testimony on this application?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, for the record, can you please just state your name and address?
Yes, Perry Mastrola, 250 Bennett Road.
Okay, and you are still under oath from your previous testimony?
Yes, thank you. Very nice presentation. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Derocha on the site. It looks like it's going to be very nice. But I do have some concerns and I'd like to go through some of the professional notes. If we could address those first and then we can go on to some other things if, if I can do that, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, by all means.
And I'll say hello to Mr. Pate, if he remembers me back from the old days when I was on the board.
Good evening. I do.
If we're going to go to, I think this is the planner's notes about buffers. So I did see the buffing in the front. But as you know, that outdoor storage is really supposed to be in the rear screened yard area only. I'm sorry, and I see that there's going to be storage in the center and storage in the rears. And there was concern that there is no screening for that storage that's in the front. That was part of the comments. Is that Mr., would that be Mr.?
I, I think I could address it, Mr. Mastrola.
Sure.
So we, we started with a site that already had building placement and, and the spaces between the buildings were the opportunities for storage. So we're discussing it with Ms. So we're discussing it with Ms. Beam. The, the central portions of the property, although not the absolute rear, functioned as rear yards because they were behind the building, and then the substantial landscaping across the front was intended to make certain that there would be no visibility. So we, we were, we were not starting with a vacant site. We're starting with a site that had buildings and we were working around them.
Well, I did notice that area is grass right now in the original satellite pictures. So now that's all going to be a paved area, am I correct?
Well, some of it's paved and some of it's still grass.
I mean, that storage area in the middle storage area.
Yeah, yes, sir. And some of, there's still grass there, but there's, there's a paved area for outside storage of the vehicles and materials, yes.
Does, can Mr. Wazalowski give me what the new impervious surface is from the existing impervious surface? What's the percentage of increase?
Mr. Wazalowski, so if, I'm going to ask if you would answer Mr. Mastrola's question. One, what is the permitted impervious coverage? And what is the impervious coverage of your plan? And what is the change in impervious coverage?
The permitted is seventy percent. The proposed is sixty-four percent. And that is a change of approximately thirty-three percent compared to existing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A lot of, there wasn't much conversation about this new drainage system. Now that you're going to, it's sixty-four percent impervious. Where is this, what are all going to be now directed to all of this, the flow of stormwater?
Mr. Mastrola, we were trying to be efficient, but we confirmed that we have designed to the township standards, confirmed that it's designed to the DEP standards, and acknowledged Ms. Newman's technical comments and agreed that all would be addressed. We did not go into a detailed description of how the, each of the stormwater elements functions, but Mr. Wazalowski, if you would take a moment to, to do that in an executive manner.
Certainly, to summarize, the proposed stormwater management system will meet both the town and state requirements for water quantity, water quality, and groundwater recharge.
Mr. Pape, what kind of, or maybe somebody can answer this, maybe Mr. Derocha himself. What type of equipment is going to be stored on this asphalt storage area? Because it says equipment storage.
Well, it's trucks and, and the equipment that he uses in his business. So you've got rollers and excavators, trucks, dump trucks.
Heavy equipment, that sort of thing.
Some of it's on the lighter side, but most, there's, I think, Mr. Derocha and I would go, I've had the privilege of representing Mr. Derocha a long time. I think there's six dump trucks, there's three pavers, there's six rollers. All the trucks together, somewhere around thirty, that's counting everything from a tack truck to a, to a lowboy tractor, to a dump, to a pickup truck. It's, it's, it's a company that the Derochas are very proud of, but it's a small family business. It's not, not a real big one.
Thank you. This all revolves around that stormwater. I did see some comments that said some of the stormwater is going to go toward Fairfield Road. That's why I asked that question. Is that true? Some of the sheet flow?
Not sheet flow. There's, the, the direction of flow is unchanged, but there's stormwater management for the systems. Mr. Wazalowski, if you could help out here?
Yeah, so in meeting those requirements for water quantity, we look at the site in both the existing and proposed condition, and there are reductions in those rates of flow that we meet.
If I can, in short, to the, to the resident's point, with the new stormwater management regulations, you are required to address water quality, quantity, and recharge to each design point, correct?
That's correct.
So in either case, whether stormwater flowed in the existing condition to Fairfield Road or off-site, because it is an analyzed drainage area as part of your plan, you will not be exceeding the flow. In fact, you will have flow reductions to each analysis point, including Fairfield Road. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And in short, just for the resident's edification, what's proposed here is two underground infiltration basins and a bio-retention basin. That's ultimately what's proposed with storm sewer extensions to mitigate stormwater management.
Thank you. The, the reason I bring that up is Fairfield Road, right at that point, on big storms gets closed by the police department. Maybe the chief might be able to verify that for me, but it does. They closed the road because it floods at that point. So I'm just hoping we're not going to be putting more water into a bad situation we have already there. I didn't hear anybody bring that up in the testimony, but that road does get closed on a big, in a big rainstorm like we just had.
But having, having a stormwater management plan now is a benefit and probably would help relieve that situation.
I only ask the questions not to be, you know, a pain, but you have to be, you know, due diligence on these things, because once it happens, it happens. The, I know that Mr. Huzar before had made a comment about this, the drainage in the building, so I have the same comment, that the drainage, where all this heavy equipment is, that could be hydraulic fluid, engine oils, there, I heard there's going to be repairs to the trucks on the site. They, I heard there was a repair crew that was just mentioned by Mr. Pape, working on trucks. So is there something mitigating oil spills, diesel fuel spills, hydraulic spills?
What we agreed was that we would make certain that any floor drains, we weren't certain if there's any floor drains, would make certain that there's no connection to a septic system. And I can tell you that amongst the design criteria of Mr. Derocha that he's given to Mr. Redasty is that there, there's to be a, a collection system that can be emptied by a licensed hauler that would be in the floor of, of the built, central building and the back building. And we'll make.
And that's part of the, the equipment storage areas and the repair areas. We'll have these drainage that go to a trap of some sort?
There'd be, in each, in each of the buildings, there'll be a a tank that can be, that can be drained. That'll be part of the design that Mr. Redasty includes in the building repurposing.
Right, that's the buildings, Mr. Pape, but what about that big equipment storage area? Both of them?
All of that is directed into the stormwater collection system, which is designed to handle storm, stormwater. Mr. Wazalowski, if you could describe how the, or Ms. Newman, how the, the systems handle that runoff?
Well, it's not about handling. So Mr. Mastrola, just so you understand, and I think we tried to indicate it, and I think you just want specifics. Both the town ordinance and the state have guidelines, which speaks to water quality, quantity, and recharge. So what you're specifically looking at is the water quality standard. And this site has been designed to accommodate that. So whether they're doing it through a treatment device, through recharge and infiltration, the site has to comply with water quality standards. So, Mr. Wazalowski, perhaps you can indicate how the site has been designed? I know it complies with water quality, but what is your water quality measure?
Certainly, some portions of the, help of I screen share again. I'm showing Exhibit A twenty-one here. Along the east and north portions of the property are a bio-retention system where water will enter, enter and receive that water quality treatment, and in select, I believe, three locations on the property. There are localized treatment devices that will perform the same function of filtering water that they collect.
That vehicle storage area in the back, is that stone?
Cement.
Is, oh, that's a cement slab? That picture, that's different color?
Yeah, and, and it's an existing cement slab.
Oh, and that's going to remain?
Yes, sir.
So my question there is, if you're storing vehicles that have hydraulic fluids and diesel fuels and different things that leak, how do you manage that spillage in that area before it go into your stormwater system or go drain into the, whatever way the flow is going now in the back? It might go toward that berm, I mean, that, I don't know what you call that. I guess that green line around there is some sort of a ditch?
No, it's, it's a bio-retention basin. And, and Mr. Wazalowski, if you could again describe what the purpose of the bio-retention basin is?
Okay, one of the purposes and the main purpose of that system is to collect and filter any pollutants that may be carried by stormwater runoff that would enter that feature.
Oh, so something is in there that would catch this oil and these hydraulic fluids and what have you? Tar, whatever, because I see that you have aggregate storage in a couple of bins right back there in that black rake-looking thing in the middle? What kind of aggregates are going to be in there?
Typically, stone and sand. That's, that's materials that are stored on, in those bins.
Will it be asphalt or other type of materials?
Asphalt is not stored. Asphalt is, is a, is a hot mix, so no, there's not asphalt stored there.
What about the, when they, sometimes what they do, Mr. Pape, they grind the surface of the roads, and then they bring that material back to their facility sometimes for reuse. That type of material is also some type of a road surface material.
There's the potential of there being millings, but millings are generally used on-site after they're created.
Yeah, I just noticed there that if you're storing right on the asphalt, that that's, in a rainstorm, that material is probably going to leach out of there. So I'm hoping that someplace there you have, you know, a catch basin, and don't get me wrong, I, I'm not overly concerned for myself about this. It's more for the community on these comments. Because I do, just for the record, next door to me, to the other side, if you look at the Bennett Road, my, I'm on the corner, right there on the corner, so I'm exactly across the street from the site. So what happens on the other side of me, which you can't see, there's another one of the same companies that does the same thing as Black Rock. That's what they do. And that place is a dump. And I'm not saying that has anything to do, Mr. Derocha, I'm sure he's, I can see he's trying to do it beautifully, but it just gives me a bad taste in my mouth, because I have next door to me a place storing aggregates, materials, drums of stuff, who knows what's in there, with no way to control it. So that is why I'm a little more concerned. I wouldn't be so concerned from here, because I doubt this stuff would ever be over to me, but that's why I asked these questions. I just wanted to put that on the record that I have experience, bad experience with a contractor next door that has this equipment, and it's always in disrepair or leaking right into the ground, into the wetland. So I, I thought I'd bring it up, so that was just a comment. I have other concerns that are greater than that. All right, that's all I had with that. As long as they understand the water quality, as your planner says, has to be a certain way, they have to hold to that. That's fine. I don't have a problem with that. And I'll go on to, so we keep just moving along. I, I understand we have to move it. The, the hours of operation of the unit, the parking spaces, how many parking spaces are actually on the site? Twenty-six, I believe? Is that right?
Yes.
Because I heard Mr. Pape say there are seventy-five employees.
Yes, I, Mr. Pape also said that there are two office workers and four workers that stay there, and that there are fifteen trucks, maximum fifteen trucks that leave, that during the peak summer season, there could be seventy-five men working for Mr. Derocha, but they don't come to the site. They go to where the work is being performed.
Right, I understand, but you did say that they would come to pick up the trucks, so they must have to park their cars.
Yeah, that's the ten and fif, the ten to fifteen drivers, depending on the time of year and what work is being performed, but it's, it's typically about ten and a maximum of fifteen. We're very comfortable. We had the opportunity to park on the site, whatever was necessary. And Mr. Derocha gave us the numbers, and the team designed a parking lot around his needs.
Okay, now I just want to bring, bring that up. As long as everybody feels comfortable that that's the way it would operate, and cars won't be parked along where there's no parking areas, and just parked along the sides of these roads coming in or anyplace else in the facility, that could be problematic. We should probably address that now. I'd like to move on to Mr. Kennel and the, the roads that we, we actually didn't get a real good explanation. And even on the reports, I haven't seen a good explanation of that traffic flow where this new driveway is now going to meet Bennett Road. I'd like to bring that drawing up so the board can see that, and then I can explain where I have some issues there.
All right. As we do that, I'd like to make this point for the board. When an applicant presents an application that is of right, the responsibilities are to demonstrate that the access points are safe and that the onsite circulation is, is safe, and that the design of the driveways, as they connect to the roadways, incorporate all of the necessary site triangles and safety features. And that was the testimony that I asked Mr. Kennel to share with you.
Yes, and I, I thank you, Mr. Pape, but I did not hear him mention the site triangles. So what I'd like to bring up here is, it's hard to see in this aerial, but there are a lot of driveways here. You have the building to the north there. They have a driveway right there, about fifteen, maybe it's going to be about twenty-five feet from the new driveway. Then you have the existing driveway just to the south of that. That's a driveway for the building to the south, right next to their driveway. So you've got two driveways that are within fifteen feet of each other to the south, and two driveways to the north that are within twenty, twenty feet of each other to the north. And then you have Bennett Road coming right down, split the middle. If everybody can see what I'm explaining, does everybody understand what I'm saying there?
Yeah.
Driveway, so you have one, two, three, four driveways, two on each side now splitting Bennett Road and from three different companies. And, and the, I'll say right now, the New Jer, that, that's the Bell Telephone or AT&amp;T building to the south. And there's a lot of traffic, as you can see their parking lot, it's a big parking lot, a lot of traffic in and out that driveway. So although his new site may not have a lot of traffic flow, AT&amp;T has a lot of traffic flow with work trucks, regular cars, big trucks in and out of that driveway. So my concern is, right now, it's very difficult, when you come out of Bennett Road, as most board members here probably travel Fairfield Road, and that forty-five mile an hour speed limit is nowhere near enforceable there. And, and I understand that. This is the way it is. You know, that's a fifty, sixty mile an hour road, and people fly. So when we come out now, my site triangle to the, and this is not the fault of the applicant, my site triangle to the south is terrible right there. So you've got to kind of pull out into Fairfield Road a little bit because of these trees, these old trees that are there, to get a, a right-hand look at the traffic that's traveling at fifty miles an hour from south to north. And then also, there's a railroad track a little further up to the north than you, some of the board members may know. You come over a hump there, and you don't have much of a site triangle, a site before that railroad. So the time you see that car is this one, it's coming over those railroad tracks. Is any of the board members have traveled Fairfield Road that they can understand what I'm saying there?
Yes, Mr. Perry. I mean, I'm.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So what happens, when we come out of Bennett Road, it's tricky. You've got, you know, fifty mile an hour cars coming back and forth. You're looking to the left and right. You're pulling a lot farther out than you really want to. And then when you have a chance, you're trying to make a left turn there. Here comes the problem. You have a new big driveway with trucks coming, or cars coming out, maybe making a right or left turns. And then below that, the same site has another driveway where cars can come out making left and right-hand turns. So now my decision-making, and my daughters and my wife, now it gets confusing about when we're going to be able to pull out of this road. It, it's hard enough now, but now with that additional new driveway at the top, and I understand that the fire marshal may have looked at the site plan, and I appreciate that he understands he needs flow, but he may not have came to the site and realized that there's all these driveways here, and then Bennett Road intersecting, where now we're going to have a, a problem of turning. So if a truck is waiting to turn out of this new site on the north driveway to make a left turn, and we're trying to make a left turn out of Bennett, and cars are coming down, it's going to be a rough situation there. I really would have liked to see them improve than the old entrance or, or some kind of other circulation here, Mr. Kennel, if you can figure out where one is an in and one is an out, or something like that to help mediate that, because, Mr. Kennel, would you understand what I'm saying? Coming out of Bennett, did you do any studying to find out? If I come out of Bennett Road, what my dangerous situation is going to be now trying to navigate two driveways, well, four driveways, and Fairfield Road at fifty mile an hour speeds?
By my, I mean, we conducted counts at Bennett Road and Fairfield Road. So I have traffic data there. But as far as sightlines, from what I, I understand you're saying, looking to the south, there, there's vegetation on the south side of Bennett Road that may affect or obscure the sightlines. You know, that is something that, if, if that vegetation's within the township right away. You know, that is something that if if that vegetation is within the township right away. Is something that Public Works could take care of, take a look at. But as but as far as our driveways are concerned and and. It's my opinion that they can operate safely and efficiently. The northernly driveway is approximately six hundred feet from the. The old railroad crossing that you made reference to in Fairfield Road. And, you know, the standards state that five hundred feet is the proper site distance. For forty five mile an hour roadway. And as it relates to the Verizon's uh site to the south of our site, their driveway closest to um. The subject property is in exit only. So again, we're not dealing with traffic that is turning into that driveway closest to our site driveways. So therefore, it's my opinion and and also taking consideration the amount of traffic we're generating. Generally exists from six to seven thirty in the morning. And then maybe an hour and a half in the afternoon, but we're we're looking at twenty to thirty vehicles. It's it's a low traffic generator. It's going to be utilized by employees who are very familiar. With the driveway operation and what is the most efficient driveway to utilize. So it's not as if we're dealing with transient traffic to and from this site. So taking all that into consideration. Uh, it's my opinion that the plan that's been been presented is a much more efficient design. And uh su- superior to what currently exists with the single driveway south of Bennett Road.
Yeah, I understand that, uh, Mr. Kennel for the site. But as far as the circulation for Bennett Road, it's not an enhancement, is it?
Oh, it's it's it it you could say it's an enhancement because again, we're having. Generally, you know, we're expecting seventy five percent of the site traffic to be oriented. To and from Route thirty three along Fairfield Road. So for the most part, exiting traffic. That is heading towards Route thirty three will utilize the northernly driveway. And therefore not be involved in the turning movements or traffic activity at Bennett Road. So they're basically being removed. From. That intersection, which should enhance the situation there from a traffic flow perspective.
I mean, is there a way, Mr. Kennel, in your professional opinion, is there some way we could mediate this, what I'm speaking about by. Changing that one of those driveways is only a right turn. And 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 the other driveway is only a left turn, you know, some other way to mediate the flow in and out so that both driveways aren't in and out. You know, both of them. I know a lot of sites will have an in driveway and an out driveway when they're big, when they're sites like this. Uh, but to have, you know, even your own people could have problems. You could have somebody coming out of the north driveway making a left. And another one of your people coming out of the 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 south driveway making a right and they'll be looking at each other, wondering what they're going to do. You know, so when they all look up the road, because that's a very small. I mean, it's it's only eighty feet or so ninety feet. So I mean, I could be pulling out, they could be looking up and they wouldn't understand what the drive, the driver is going to be doing coming out of the other road. Is there a way we can?
The applicant is not willing to make that change. This design has been in the works for some time. It is well designed. It has gone through safety review. And your personal concern is understood, but we're not going to change the plan.
Uh, well, I'm only asking the question. I mean, the board.
I answered.
You don't have to change the plan, but the board can consider it. I mean, I'm not asking for much there. I'm asking to, you know, my wife and children don't get killed trying to pull out of Bennett Road because. We have a bad traffic flow from trucks pulling out of two different driveways at the same time and then two driveways to the north and the south.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I think the board is getting put in in a different different position. I think we need to recognize that this is a permitted use on this site. The board can only evaluate site safety at the ingress and egress driveways. So I think we've heard the testimony from the member of the public. We've heard the applicant's response. To the extent that the board members have a site safety concern, I think we can pose those questions, but to continue to dialogue on this. I'm not sure um is is benefiting anything here. I would just remind the board again, it's a permitted use. We're tasked with ensuring that the site um access points, safe function, have safe function for egress and ingress.
Understood, understood. I just wanted to put it out there for the board to ask those questions. And um and Mr. Kennel, for my final question for you on that, does the four driveways that are so close together meet DOT standards there?
Well, again, this is this is not a state highway where we would have greater volumes. The the two way volumes on Fairfield Road are approximately five hundred vehicles. Northbound and southbound during the peak hours.
Sure.
Uh, so again, to 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 equate this to NJ DOT standards. That is to a roadway that has volumes in excess of a thousand vehicles. So I don't think that's appropriate. The the use to the north of our site. Uh, I know it's vacant, but it appears that it's an industrial type use, which would be a low traffic generator. So again, I would not expect. The four driveways here that you have referenced, that there would be any negative impact by this development onto Bennett Road or onto those other driveways.
Yeah, okay. And I would just like to say, you know, I I thank you to Mr. De Roche because I know he's going to improve the site. I I get it. The site is unsightly. But I do have to bring up some of these concerns and my only last concern I have there about the storage in that center area. Once again, I believe there's. A waiver of variance involved with that. What's the tallest piece of equipment that would ever be stored in that area tall uh height wise?
The tallest thing I think we is 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 the um. The milling machine, which is something in the range of fifteen feet at the top of the conveyor.
So some of this equipment will eclipse the height of the front building.
Some, there there are three milling machines that are fifteen feet tall. Um, Mr. Redasty, what's the total height of the front building?
The front building is approximately twelve feet to the eve. And then with the roof pitch, it's probably another uh foot and a half to two feet uh above that point. So it's it's probably about fourteen feet to the highest point of the building.
Right, the the point I bring up there is that this once again about the screening, if you have tall equipment, especially a crane.
There's no cranes.
Uh, well, you can say that now, but if they park it there five months from now, how am I going to stop them? You know, anything like that, any tall equipment, you can't get, you can't pass the screening. Uh, with that landscaping she has in the front, some of that won't even grow. For who knows how long. Um, so there's just be a screening issue, which is was brought up by the engineers. Uh, that's not me. That was the engineering CME that brought up about the uh screening. For those that equipment and uh I'll leave it at that for the board to to look at and thank you very much to. Uh, the engineers and the board members and I, Mr. Pape, of course, as always. And the uh, Mr. De Roche, I wish you luck there and then I'll come and visit you when you move in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mistrol. Okay, do we have anybody else in the public that would like to speak?
Any other members of the public that wish to ask questions or comment, please use the raise your hand feature.
Bobby Eileen.
I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay. Seeing that no one is raising their hands, we will close the public portion of the meeting. Mr. Pape. Uh, well, before I you let ask you to summarize, does anybody else in the board have any comments or questions that they'd like to ask? Have our professionals like to make any father final comments? Newman?
The only thing I was just going to note for the board, um, which I was bringing up while Mr. Kennel was answering the question is. The separation of the driveways does not violate any code of our ordinance. I know the resident asked about DOT standards. But I would note that Howell doesn't have or this application does not violate. Any section of the code with the locations of the driveways. And I would note from a circulation perspective, unless the ac- access point was directly opposite Bennett Drive. It makes the most sense to keep it on the furthest extremities so that it doesn't make a direct conflict with an interception.
Thank you for that additional comment. Okay, seeing that nobody on the board has any other comments, Mr. Pape, can you please summarize?
Very briefly, thank you. Um, I think that from the quality of the presentation by these professionals, the board. Is should have a sense of Mr. De Roche's commitment. The just beginning from the roadway, the intention is to create this executive landscaping plan. To take a building that's tired and in need of attention and giving it that attention and doing it in a very professional artistic way. And once on the site to create two things, aesthetics and safety. The stormwater management system where there is none and it will be a one hundred percent compliance system. The circulation system that's really not working very well with the circulation system that will do will work very well. The you, the business operation of Mr. De Rocha is an established business. He has provided these services for thirty plus years, working most often for municipal governments and county governments throughout the state. I think that I'm I'm very comfortable saying that he would be a true asset to Howell. And he's, I would ask the board to consider this application for preliminary and final site plan to repurpose the site favorably. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pape. Okay, if nobody else has any further comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve SP dash one zero. Is it eight four? Eight four, right? For prime uh primary and final approval for Black Rock Enterprises LLC. Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Chief.
I'll second that. And just one thing, uh, Eileen, maybe you could pass a note to our DPW if they could check that site triangle for overgrown uh. Vegetation over there.
Yes, Rob, I already got an email, uh, email out to my traffic safety unit. Over there and take a look at that because then they'll forward their recommendations uh to Public Works.
Thank you, Chief.
Second the motion.
Thank you. Yes, roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai.
Did we lose Paul?
I think we did. Mr. Husser.
See him there. Hold on, you're muted.
He's a yes, he just nodded yes.
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Husser.
Yes.
Chief Kudrick.
Yes, very nice job by all the professionals uh involved in this in this project. He turned an eyesore into, it looks like it's going to be a very nice, very nice project and I'm sure. Uh, Mr. De Rocha is going to be a very good neighbor uh to Mr. Mistrola.
We do our best. Thank you.
Mr. Nacastro.
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano.
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Okay. We're we're going to take a five minute break here.
Good night. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's nine oh seven now. We'll come back nine twelve, nine fifteen, somewhere around there.
The board will take a short recess. We'll be back at nine twelve. Thank you. Any board will now reconvene. And let the record reflect that Mr. Bavai had to leave, so. He is no longer attending the meeting.
Okay. We have a corner. We need to wait for Mr. Cristiano and Mr. Castro. Up chief, thank you. Thanks, Joe. All right, great. Let's get to that. Get going. Case number SP dash one zero eight eight four four eight one, Route nine. Who's counselor?
Dante Alfieri is counselor. Mr. Alfieri, who else do you need brought into the meeting?
Ellie Weiss.
Okay.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. How's everybody tonight?
Very good, thank you.
I hope I hope this is a very fast one for you guys.
That would be nice.
So tonight I have one individual who's going to provide testimony. His name's Ellie Weiss. He is a uh. He's a principal in the app, uh, part of the applicant. Um, tonight we're here seeking the approval of a change in use. What was, everybody is aware that the site is previously known as Gold's Gym. It's located on Route nine. Um, we're proposing to change the use from Gold's Gym Fitness Center to a office building. We're not proposing any um site improvements, um, any exterior improvements at all. Um, the only improvements we are going to do are modifications at the interior to fit out the fitness center to an office space.
Yep, yep. For for the record, we uh we would like to recognize that Mr. Nacastro has recused himself from hearing this application.
And he has left the meeting.
Thank you. Uh, so without further ado, I'd like to have a Mr. Weiss uh sworn in.
Mr. Weiss, please raise your right hand. Mr. Weiss, do you swear for that the testimony provided before the board this evening will be the truth?
Yes.
Can you please give us your business address?
Four two zero one US Highway nine in Howell, New Jersey.
Thank you very much.
Ellie, if you could just um advise the board as to what what function you have with the applicant. I'm an attorney for the applicant. Okay, and um so we're proposing to change the fitness center, Gold's Gym into an office. Um, and the office space that's going to be utilized is for your business, correct? Correct. And the type of office that's going to be, what type of um use is going to be? Is it going to be just computers and chairs? Correct. Just a traditional office building? Yes. Now, as it relates to the office space itself, um, what are the hours of operation? Approximately from nine till either five or six PM. And that's Monday through Friday, Monday through Saturday? Monday through Friday. Monday through Friday. Um, and what type of deliveries are you anticipating? Um, just the standard United States Post Office deliveries and the occasional FedEx and UPS. Okay, so not tractor trailers or anything along those lines? No. Um, and what how what are the anticipated number of employees are going to be at this site? Um, between thirty and thirty five employees. Thirty and thirty five. And again, the tenant itself is is you, correct? You're you're and it's an office. Yes. Um, you're not proposing any medical use? No. As it relates to signage, you're not proposing any signage at this point? Not at this time, no. But if you were going to put a sign up, it would be smaller, at the same size or smaller than the existing sign on. Correct. One of the questions that was brought up in the board professionals review was refuge. Um, being that it's an office, do you anticipate to be generating an excessive amount of uh trash? No, we do not. And are you going to have, how are you going to handle trash pickup? There will be a dumpster in the back for um regular pickup. Okay. As it relates to lighting, are you proposing any changes to the the existing lighting? No. No, and um parking, the the site again was a gym, so there was a. An ex- I guess an excessive amount of foot traffic throughout the day. Um, but being that this is an office, you're not anticipating the traffic to be anywhere near what what a what a gym was generating. Correct. I believe that's that's all we have. Um, unless there's something we missed or in the reports.
Ju- just if I can clarify on the signage, there's currently exterior signage out there. So aren't you going to replace that?
It has been removed already.
Okay, so understood. Um. Mr. Chairman, the only design waiver I would note in in association with this application is any office in excess of ten thousand square feet. Would require a loading zone and no loading zone is provided. Dante, is that is it that you don't feel one is warranted, given it's an office use?
Yeah, that's correct. We're not, we're not anticipating the need for a loading zone. Um, as Mr. Weiss testified. We're only, they're only anticipating types of deliveries from US Postal Service and occasionally FedEx UPS.
And the dumpster that's in the rear, is that an existing dumpster?
It actually has been removed by the previous owner, but. Once um the office starts being used as an office, there'll be another one put there.
And will it be in an enclosure?
Yes, there is an enclosure there already.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing further.
Ms. Newman, if I could ask you a question. Are we good on parking? Do they meet all of the ordinance requirements for the quantity of parking? He specified to thirty to thirty five employees. Do we have? Enough?
So, Mr. Chairman, uh, by the ordinance, they're required to have fifty parking spaces and ninety six actually exist at the site.
Oh, really? Oh, okay. I I will. Like that one anymore. Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
What type of business is it? Just out of curiosity. Is an office. It is a back office for um real estate and healthcare ventures. Um, we do not provide any healthcare services. It is simply a back office with accountants, attorneys. Purchasers, main back office maintenance people, all all desk jobs, so to say.
Um, purchasers, main back office maintenance people, all all desk jobs, so to say.
And not not a lot of proposed uh, wh- what, let me refer that differently. Do you expect um clients or any but a large quantity of clients or so forth coming to the building or is it simply just for office staff?
No, it's simply just for the employees. There's very little in and out.
Anybody else got any questions?
It's good to see a vacant building being used.
Okay, thank you. All right, with with it, uh, Mr. Alfieri, does that conclude your testimony?
Yes, it does.
Okay, we'll open it up to the public. Anybody from the public wishing to speak? Eileen, please explain to them how to make that happen.
If any member of the public has any questions or comments on the application for forty-four eighty-one Route nine LLC. Please use the raise your hand feature. We'll bring you into the meeting one at a time. If you're on the telephone, use star nine to raise or lower your hand. Use star six for muting or unmuting yourself. And we'll give you about a minute or so before we bring you into the hearing.
Yeah, it's about nine twenty-three, so we'll wait about a minute.
I have no one with their hand raised.
We have about ten seconds.
Okay.
Okay, eh, anybody else raise their hand?
I have no one with their hands raised.
Okay, then we'll close the public portion of this meeting. If nobody else from the board has any questions, Mr. Alfieri, would you like to summarize?
Um, I believe it's a pretty self-explanatory, but again, we're just utilize, we're looking to change the use from a gym to a office building.
Fantastic. Thank you. The uh, if if no one else has any questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Do I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Husser.
Yes, and I I just uh to what Chief said, I do applaud the applicant for for using existing infrastructure. I wish we saw more of that in this township. Hold on.
Chief Kudrick.
Yes, Mr. Weiss, welcome to the neighborhood.
Councilwoman Richmond.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano.
Yes.
Chairman Tannenhouse.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. Have a great evening. I appreciate it.
Okay, next case up is SD dash two nine nine five, Chris Alfer. Hope I'm saying that right.
Alltaver, I believe it is.
Alltaver, okay.
And that's Mr. Cohen's case.
Yep, and is Mr. Nacastro going to return to the?
Yes, he said he would. And he's back.
Mr. Castro. Mr. Cohen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Todd Cohen for the applicant, Chris Altaver. I believe Joe Kishuba, my engineer, should be online.
Uh, yes, I thought I brought him in, but.
Don't see how many.
There he is now. Uh.
Okay.
He is in.
I am here.
Okay, there he is.
Evening.
Um. Anyway, we have an existing uh three point six six acre lot on exist with an existing dwelling in the R three zone on New Friendship Road. We're seeking a minor subdivision, subdivided property to two lots, one of which will have the existing dwelling and one will be for a. Proposed new construction of a dwelling. Uh, the applicant requires a variance for the size of a flag lot. Again, we're in the R three zone and I believe the flag lot's projected to be about three point three five acres. With that as an introduction, I'd like to introduce Joe, the professional planner and engineer for the project. Uh, with KBA Engineering, Joe, if you could put your qualifications on the record, please.
Well, let's swear, Mr. Kishuba, first. Mr. Kishuba, do you swear from the testimony you provide before the board this evening will be the truth?
I do. Thank you so much. Joseph Kishuba, KBA Engineering Services, Madison, New Jersey. Uh, licensed professional engineer, professional planner in the state of New Jersey, uh sixteen years experience in the field. Uh, have appeared before numerous boards testifying both as engineer planner, including this word. It has been some time since I've been here.
I will accept your credentials. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joe, do we have an exhibit that we want to put up or Eileen could put up the plan? Would that be helpful?
Uh, certainly, the development plan, item three.
Give me one second.
Sure. And once that's up, if you could just briefly describe the application to the board, that would be great.
Uh, so the property block seventy-eight, block twenty-one. Um, it has two hundred and thirty-two feet of frontage on New Friendship Road.
Give me one second. That is not the plan. There it is.
Okay.
Can you see that?
Yes.
Again. Uh, so it's an existing lot with existing home on the property. It's a single-story dwelling uh on the existing property. Um, again, it has two hundred and thirty-two square, two hundred and thirty-two feet of frontage along New Friendship Road. Uh, it is uh uh missing a corner of the property, lot twenty-one point oh one. Uh, which was uh taken from the property back in nineteen seventy-seven. Uh, now there's a question in the board engineer planner's do letter regarding that that lot has existed since the since the seventies. Um, so this lot in particular has wetlands and buffers along the eastern side, north on the. Uh, plan view, as you see it, is down on the page. Wetlands and buffers are associated with the Tipmus Creek. Uh, the lot is four point two nine acres. Um, it was uh in the nineteen forties, it was part of chicken coops and farmland. A house, this house was built uh in the nineteen sixties. Um, the applicant did obtain uh a uh environmental consultant who was working on obtaining. Wetlands approvals as well as flood hazard approvals for the application. An LOI has been issued for the property. Uh, we're waiting on the uh the delineation of the flood hazard and repairing buffer by DEP. Uh, but we anticipate it'll be in the location as identified on the plans. Uh, surrounding uses in the area, you can see in the top right of the uh plan in front of you. Um, it's primarily residential in the R three zone. This is in the R three. Uh, the Heritage Drive. Um, subdivision is across the street to the north, Mark Drive to the south. Um, Sammy Drive and Lender Lane to the east across the creek. Uh, and everything to the west is larger lots, uh, some wooded, mostly uh remnant farmland. Uh, the applicant is proposing to subdivide the lot into two properties, again, the R three zone. Uh, typically fifteen thousand square feet is uh is permitted with a hundred feet of frontage. In this case, because the lot is narrower than the hundred feet, it was determined that it's considered a flag lot. So the larger lot, which is on plan view, the right side of the property back into the larger piece, lot twenty-one point oh two is considered a flag lot. So under your flag lot requirements, uh, the uh lot area there required would be six acres. Uh, and the um setbacks are increased to seventy-five feet from any property line. Uh, now, the point of the subdivision, one of the design parameters provided by the applicant was. To save the existing home that's on the property. They want to reuse the existing home. Uh, that'll be on proposed lot twenty-one point oh three. And then subdivide off the rest of the property accordingly. Lot twenty-one point oh three, which will maintain the existing home is thirty-five thousand six hundred and thirty-three square feet. So more than double the lot area requirement. Uh, it's also a hundred and fifty-seven feet wide, so certainly wider than the uh frontage requirement. Uh, but by virtue of us saving that existing home, pushes that property line a little further west and narrowing the other lot. Meaning that now it's considered a flag lot. Uh, but it's basically a flag lot simply because we're trying to save the home. If we were to demolish the home, we could do two conforming lots here at a hundred feet of uh frontage. Uh, and be fully conforming, the lot line would go straight back through the entire property. The homes could be built towards the back of the property, just as shown. So really, the 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 impact and the uh the concern here regarding the flag lot is. Is developed simply because we're trying to save a home that exists there today. Um. So it does, uh, it does have seventy-four feet of frontage, whereas a typical flag lot might have between twenty-five and forty feet. Uh, and again, with the applicant could develop it conforming, who wants to maintain an existing home, not uh simply demolish and and clear cut the lot. Keep the character of the home, clean it up. Anyone familiar with the property and was driven by knows it's been um vacant for some time. Definitely needs some TLC, but the intent is to propose a driveway to that house and clean up that lot. And then propose a driveway up the right-hand side uh towards the rear for a second home. Um. The proposed improvements would can be consistent of the driveways for each of the lots. Uh, we are requesting a waiver uh or variance, I'm not sure, based on our view letters. Um, I think it's a waiver uh for sidewalks. Uh, as identified in the board engineers review, that no sidewalks exist on this side of New Friendship Road uh until you get east of the creek. The town owns the lot immediately uh east of the property, lot nine, left on page uh on your uh screen there. Um, so there would be a gap uh in sidewalk there, even if we did extend sidewalk across the frontage of property. And again, west of here, there is no sidewalk until you get substantially far from this property uh down to the next subdivision. Uh, there is sidewalk available across the street, so it's not that there's no pedestrian access through this area, just no sidewalk on this side of the street. Uh, there is curb, uh, but we are requesting a waiver from providing sidewalks through here. Um, the applicant will develop the homes, uh, the proposed home in the rear, fully compliant with all setbacks, coverages and heights. Uh, the existing home that is going to remain also will comply with all setbacks, uh, heights and coverages. Um, there was a request in the board engineers review letter to demonstrate that setbacks are measured from the repairing and buffer. And I would agree that a side setback is measured from there. Uh, but the ordinance does state specifically when you're dealing with a flag lot that the seventy-five foot setback is measured from a property line. Um, so I think uh the limitation on lot twenty-one point oh two, that back lot. Would be that we would need to maintain the ten-foot side setback for the R three zone uh from the repair and buffer. Uh, and we agree uh with that determination would identify that on the plan, which want to make that clear. Uh, regarding tree removal, we're not anticipating a substantial amount of tree removal. Uh, when you view the site from there, the the back of the property is pretty uh vacant and uh. Uh, is essentially turf and grass. Uh, there are not, it's there's not a substantial amount of trees towards the rear. Any trees that are being removed would be for the driveway installation uh generally. And we would anticipate that that would be at the time of preparation of a plot plan and development plan for that lot. Again, the existing home is staying. The only improvement there is to put in a driveway, which is generally right where the driveway is today. The driveway today is grass uh and uh and dirt. Uh, we put in a a proper paved driveway for two vehicles. Uh, the existing home there is a three-bedroom home, so two vehicles is compliant with the RSIS uh requirements. Uh, and then the driveway going to the rear home uh would be put in at the time that somebody develops that particular lot. Um, and the parking would comply, you know, we're anticipating likely a five-bedroom home that would require three parking stalls. We don't have a specific house design at this point. The applicant's intention uh is to, you know, fix up the front home. Uh, put in the driveway, put in uh utilities. Uh, there is an old well and septic on the property. We would anticipate connecting to the water and sewer that's available in the street now. Um, and then uh, you know, someone would develop the the rear property and extend their water and sewer there. The sewer tap exists for the existing home uh currently uh as was determined in our reviews. Uh, so they're certainly set up to go ahead and connect that home uh and clean that up and get that home active again, occupied again. And then again, the intent, the intent would be that at the time of uh submission of a plot plan for the rear home, once someone, you know, develops what they want. Puts together architectural plans and that, they would apply for the driveway, the water and sewer connections for that and any tree removal necessary for that particular home. Um. I don't believe there'll be any substantial impact to the neighborhood, uh, other than it will certainly improve things, improve the aesthetics. Right now, it's a a vacant home, so obviously something we want to uh see cleaned up and reused. And clean up the frontage of the property, uh identified in your, uh, I believe is your board planners review. Um, there are a number of trees on the property that are inhibited by vines and that. It just, it needs some cleanup and certainly that's what the applicant intends. Um, there are some variances required specifically, uh, the lot area variance for the uh flag lot. Uh, so three point um three nine five acres uh required where, or I'm sorry, provided where six acres is required. Um. My professional opinion, that variance can be granted under both the C one and C two criteria. Um, C one specifically by reason of extraordinary exceptional situation uniquely affecting a specific piece of property or the structures lawfully existing thereon. If the existing house were about fifteen or twenty feet further east, we could provide two fully conforming lots here and keep the house. But because the house is a little further west than than we would like, we do have to make the 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 second lot a little narrower. Um, and creates this flag lot situation. Uh, so that is certainly a unique situation, unique to this property. Um, and and makes it i- impossible to comply with a a standard setback. Or I'm sorry, it's standard subdivision. And the uh the intent here again is trying to save that house uh uh and making every effort to do so. Um, so there is practical difficulty developing this lot in a conforming way relative to the lawfully existing structure. Uh, and under C two criteria, the substantial benefit criteria, uh where the benefits of the application outweigh the detriments. Uh, taking a look at the purposes of zoning for municipal municipal land use law, specifically this promotes purpose. A, promoting gender welfare and C appropriate appropriate population density. By bringing the lots closer in conformity to the zone plan. Again, the R three zone calls for uh fifteen thousand square foot lots, about a third of an acre. Uh, the existing lot uh is rather large, uh, and the over five acres. So subdividing it into two homes certainly brings it a little bit closer to the allowable zoning and the zone plan. Again, both lots are certainly still going to be oversized, uh, but the uh, it does bring it more into the uh appropriate zone plan. Uh, more into conformity with the uh anticipated density for this area. Uh, and although it's substantially oversized, it is uh more commensurate with the area. Again, surrounding this are typical subdivisions, typical lot areas expected in the R three zone. Uh, it also promotes a desirable visual environment. The the intent here, clean up the frontage, clean up that house. Uh, make it a usable home again, clean up the streets gate. Uh, and also uh provides the benefit of a dedication uh along the frontage. Right now, the property, as determined by my survey, is actually out in the street. But we would dedicate fifteen feet to Howell to provide an adequate right of way through that area. So that that would conclude my testimony. I can certainly go through the board review letters, uh, if the uh, if the board wants uh, uh, would so. Wish me to do so.
Joe, thank you for that thorough presentation. You've addressed most of the comments in CME's letter of September ninth. There are some technical items in section five. Uh, you're also in agreement to make those changes to the plans as requested?
We'll make all the changes. The the one uh clarification and change I just wanted to uh verify was that setback issue. Uh, to the uh repairian zone, I do believe to go, obviously, the ordinance does state that side setbacks or setbacks are measured from those zones. Uh, but the seventy-five foot requirement is specifically from a from a lot line and is identified that way in the ordinance. So I just want to confirm that it is the ten feet from the repair and buffer. We would show the show that on the plan appropriately.
Thank you. Uh, for the record, I'd also like to note that the Environmental Commission report of nine eight twenty twenty-one had no comments. The Shade Tree Commission report of March seventeenth had no comments. Uh, the Howell Township Fire Bureau site review of March ninth uh had no uh comments with the. Uh, the Howell Township Fire Bureau site review of March ninth, uh, had no, uh, comments with regard to the subdivision. And Farmers Advisory Report of March twenty-fifth had no comment as well.
Uh, one other item we did, the applicant did provide me recently, he had a pesticide, uh, analysis done, and it turned up there was no pesticide letter arsenic, uh, uh, on the site.
And we'll provide, uh, copy of that to the, uh, to the board.
Certainly.
Ms. Chairman, I think that concludes our presentation unless there's any questions from your, uh, board members or professionals.
I, I have a question, uh, there was testimony placed on the record that both the existing building and the new building will both be served by public sewer and water, but the site plan still shows the existing septic and well to remain.
We, we will update that, after that, we had obtained the reviews from the water sewer company and I, and then identified that a cleanout was actually installed for that house. So we will update that and, and show that it'll be connected to the water and sewer.
Okay, and then I have a question from Ms. Newman. Do you, we have any concerns with the driveways being oriented right across the street from the exit of Cat Tail Drive?
So essentially, I mean, I would first defer to the engineer because it is a driveway. It doesn't necessarily carry the same level of traffic, um, that we would foresee. Mr. Geshu, but do you have any other reasonable reason that that would be concerning, given it's directly? I mean, I would prefer it to almost be directly opposite Mr. Tenenhouse because at least then you're making the movement opposite traffic. The one driveway is slightly offset, um, Mr. Geshu, but do you have any concerns about that?
Uh, I do not, given the size of the property, we certainly anticipate there's going to be a K-turn area and ability to be exiting that driveway facing forward at all times. Uh, so no, I don't have any particular concerns with the turning movements there. Uh, and, uh, the existing driveway access, anyone who's been out there who's seen it, it's, it's a grass driveway, but the two accesses are about in the same exact location as we're showing on the plans now.
The, the one thing I would note, and I think we, we may not have picked this up in our review, but the driveway, because it's over a hundred feet in length, needs to be eighteen feet wide, serving lot twenty-one O two?
And we can certainly comply with that, uh, you know, we have plenty of impervious coverage here to, uh, to work with.
So, Mr. Chairman, I don't know that that specifically answers your question, but essentially, I, I am comfortable with the alignment as it is because you'll be able to see the intersection as you're making the movement. Um, the K-turn area, I would recommend that be provided or shown on lot twenty-one oh point O two, as well as the increased width. Currently, there's K-turn area shown.
Thank you, yeah, that, uh, I was just asking for your opinion, I didn't have any technical.
Hey, I mean, quick question, Joe, you said that you're doing a lot of cleanup and all that kind of stuff. So we, we agree, we're, we're, we're creating a non-conforming flag lot. If you were to demo that house and build a new house, would you have two conforming lots?
Yes.
So what's the reason why they don't want to demo the lot? I mean, how do you justify this as good planning?
Uh, because we are trying to maintain an existing structure, we're trying to save, uh, materials, try not to, uh, you know, throw the home in the dumpster and start from scratch, we're, you know.
It's in this repair, right? It's in this repair.
Uh, it's, the yard is in this repair, I haven't been inside the house myself to say whether, what condition it's in.
That over.
Uh, that I don't know, I don't know if the applicant's on or not to be able to answer that.
I would just caution the board that, uh, from a planning perspective, it's typically not good planning prac-, uh, practice to encourage the creation of non-conforming lots. Um, and while Joe did provide some testimony as to, you know, the reason they're creating the non-conforming lot is because, um, they want to maintain the structure. It seems like we don't know, um, the condition of the structure. And the proposed flag lot is, you know, almost half of what it would be required for a flag lot in, uh, area.
I think we also have to keep in mind, this is an R three zone, I understand it's a flag lot, it's a three-point-three-five acre lot. There's not even a lot that size on both sides of the street here. I mean, it's definitely, uh.
And to provide conformity.
Spirit of a flag lot, as opposed to an R three lot.
I guess.
We could, we could shave twenty-five feet off of the right side of lot twenty-one point O three, so essentially uh, making twenty-one O two just very slightly larger, but substantially under the six acre, then that would be conforming. Uh, so it is kind of a unique situation here, being in the R three as opposed to one of the AREs.
And what is the R three lot requirement, Todd, just for the record?
Fifteen thousand square feet?
Yeah.
I, I guess what I'm hard pressed to understand is, and I know you, you provided testimony, I'll certainly defer to Ms. Bell, but you indicated that this qualifies under this one criteria. And I'm not sure that there is a hardship on the property, you're creating the hardship, which is generating the C one criteria. So I don't agree, I would defer to Ms. Bell certainly as a board planner, that this qualifies under the C one criteria. And then again, defer to her as to whether or not you've met that burden under the C two criteria.
I would agree that I don't believe this meets the C one criteria also, um, you know, the lot is you have more than enough acreage to make a, you have, the lot's large, um. There, there is the possibility to make conforming lots, um, it's just, you know, you want to keep the structure that's currently on it. And as I said, um, I personally don't think that the creation of a non-conforming lot meets the C two criteria typically, um, it's not, you know, generally what we try to do as planners, uh, we try to maintain, you know, the zone plan and the standards that have been put forth.
If they were to remove that house and made this conforming, would they yield more houses? Would they be able to yield more houses?
No, because they don't have the required frontage, so the required frontage zone is three hundred feet. The existing frontage is give or take around two hundred and twenty-five feet, so with a minimum of a hundred feet of frontage required in order to try to yield the third lot, that would end up with a frontage variance.
Unless we install a new street.
Right, right.
So if, if we extended a cul-de-sac into the property, I believe we could get more lots. That, that's not what the applicant's asking for, obviously.
You, you with the repairian buffer?
Uh, there's a substantial area outside that, again, the fifteen thousand square foot zone, uh, the lot twenty-one point O three is uh, over two times the size that's permitted, uh, so the lot, the lot size is rather small. Uh, and again, i- in order to bring it into conformity, we're actually going to make lot twenty-one point O three smaller. You know, substantially, if we make the smaller lot even smaller, we then comply. It's, uh, the oddity of this application.
I mean, the lot is nine times the size of what's required, I mean.
Well, no, you would not comply because you're not, the acreage still wouldn't comply for the, uh.
If I make, if I make lot twenty-one point O two, a hundred feet wide at the front, it's no longer a flag lot. So if, uh, if I take twenty-five feet off the right side of lot twenty-one point O three, that lot is still well over the size, uh, and complies with the width. And then twenty-one point O two comply.
The building's only twenty feet from the side yard to line.
Correct, and the side setback there is ten, we just wanted to give them a little bit more room, so they have room to, you know, put a, you know, the E C units, uh, need to, something on the side there. Uh, we could get it to eighty-four feet if we, uh, if we needed to.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, uh, just revise, uh, advise the board, I had misspoke. Um, we do not require an eighteen-foot wide driveway, if it exceeds a hundred feet, it just needs to be paved and be designed to accommodate an emergency vehicle. So I just want to note that the twelve feet wide is in fact adequate.
Okay, thank you.
So Laura, I have a question, so the property owner could potentially sell this off and a cul-de-sac could potentially be put in there with more, with additional homes?
Uh, in theory, they could take the, what I'll call the flag lot. Um, obviously, if we had a major subdivision, we have the fifty-foot buffer requirement, so they, they need relief in order to do that because they wouldn't be able to get fifty feet on either side and cut a roadway in.
Right.
Um, and I would certainly recommend if the board were to act favorably upon the variance relief that's being sought, it be put with a restriction in place because, um, you know, again, we're, we're creating one lot that's like double the size that it needs to be, but meets the frontage. And then one lot that doesn't meet the flag lot area, but meets the frontage. So I, I just want to, you know, we shouldn't put ourselves in a position where twenty-one point O two could be subdivided in the future.
Right.
To the chief's point, the applicant's not looking to maximize.
I understand that, Todd.
And Laura's, Laura's concerns are, are valid, and we're not, like I said, since we're not looking to do that, we'd be okay with the restriction.
Right.
Todd, that's why I just wanted to weigh it out, whether.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I mean, you could look at it the other way too, it's like, why is it a, you know, it's not a flag lot, it's just a regular lot that's way oversized with a frontage variance.
Right, and the way I look at it is. And the way I look at it is we're potentially approving one additional home instead of multiples that could be there.
I, I, I thoroughly agree with that.
We don't make the ordinance, we just follow them, Todd, you know that.
Well, that's why we have guys like Joe and, and Laura and stuff to show us what we can and can't do and what makes the most sense.
And if this were not considered a flag lot, if we were limited to just the ten-foot side setback, we could fit a fifty-foot wide house in the front part of that lot. Uh, so it's not your typical flag where you have this very narrow area that's just unusable unless it's a driveway.
Hey, Ms. Newman, if, if, if the board would act favorably, would you recommend that that restriction be, be recorded with the deed?
Yes.
And the applicant would be agreeable to it.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
So Steve, that'll be in the, uh, resolution.
If approved, that would be a condition of the rule.
Okay, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Cohen, does that, does that conclude your testimony? We'll open it up to the public.
It does, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, we'll open it up to the public. Elaine, please explain to them how to.
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public on the application of Chris Altavere. Anyone who has questions or comments can use the raise your hand feature. If you're calling in, please use star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute or unmute yourself.
Okay.
And we do have someone, hold on. We have Mr. Platt.
Mr. Platt? Can you please explain how to unmute in case he's on a phone?
He's not, Mr. Platt, can you unmute, uh, unmute yourself and also put on your video?
Now you are muted, hit the button again. Dusty, okay, uh, I see you've unmuted, Dusty, can you hear us?
Can you? Yes, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Okay, um, I have the property adjoining the, uh, property that we're speaking about tonight, I'm at twenty New Friendship Road.
Mr. Platt, if I could just stop you for a second, is there a way that you could turn your video on, please? The, the, the New Jersey regulations require us to have video.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you went out when you were speaking, can I turn what?
Your video on, please.
Um, yes, I can, oh.
There you go, perfect.
Hold on, how about, how about a little light, what do we think?
That'd be great.
You'll probably regret it once you get a look at me, but. Now, my question is specifically, uh, are two properties meet? And there is a tree line right along the, uh, boundary, and I'm not sure whether the tree line is, I think it go, it's a little on my property and a little on the, uh, my neighbor's property. And I just would like some kind of reassurance that, that, um, tree line wouldn't come down unless it was absolutely necessary.
Mr. Platt, I'm looking at the plan, there seems to be a, of some type of metal fence between the properties, is that correct?
Well, I originally put that metal fence in with the trees on my left. I used to access the back part of the property from that side, I don't do that anymore. But that fence does not indicate the property line.
No, I understand that, I see that, it shows that clearly it's a little bit over on your property, but I'm trying to get a perspective as to where are the trees in relation to that fence?
Pretty much right next to them, at this point, they've grown over.
Well, if they're on your property, obviously they're going to stay there. And I think if they're on our property, there really wouldn't be much reason to take them down, would there, Joe?
Uh, no, and where we're showing, uh, driveway, uh, just for representative purpose, if you know where the little shed is uh, on the property, the back right, we're showing the driveway going through the shed. But my, my recollection is all those trees are certainly further over that, towards your property than that shed.
Yes, I think the, if you had a laser beam, you would probably go through half of them. Um, all I'm saying is, my concern is, if you're going to put a house back there, I'd like to re-, uh, have that tree line there for their, uh, privacy and my own. I don't see any reason to tear it down unless, so can we leave it up?
Is there any, um, Ms. Newman, is there any required setbacks or anything like that, or buffer zones?
There's no required buffer, um, there are required setbacks. So, and it would appear that the driveway is probably going to be thirty feet from that property line from these plans. So I would just merely ask, I mean, we've heard the comments from, um, the neighbor. Uh, is it possible to keep at least ten feet off that property going back? I think that covers it on both sides, um, your driveway's thirty feet, so I think we should be easily able to respect at least ten feet off your property line where you can maintain that existing vegetation line.
We have no objection to maintaining the trees within ten feet of the property, not, not at all.
Okay, I have no problem with, um, the rest of the plans as far as I could tell, and, uh, I think the owner should be able to do what he wants. And, um, I, my concern is that, um, that the tree line may remain so that, uh, both of us can enjoy some privacy, and that's it.
Mr. Platt, uh, they've agreed to attend, to maintain ten feet worth of tree line from the property line, does that satisfy you?
Absolutely, no problem whatsoever.
Fantastic, thank you. Mr. Cohen, any objections?
Okay, I'm out then.
Yes.
You're out, if you have no other further questions, appreciate your time.
Uh, listen, I do union meetings by Zoom and I pity all of you.
So filling up pain.
Hey, try dealing with four of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have their hand raised?
Brian, I have a question.
Yeah.
And I guess it, it's more for Laura and Christine. If, if there's no, there's no timeframe on how long this place has been vacant, nor we have no idea the condition of this house. So there's nothing saying that this can even be saved. What if the determination is made that? Yeah. It's not salvageable, you got to build a new house anyway. Aren't, isn't that kind of what we're talking about, not creating a non-conforming lot? Right? So how, how can this determination be made when we don't know if this place can even be, you know, brought up to a livable?
Well, if I think I could, Mr. Hussler, that's why Christine noted that they can't, they don't qualify for the criteria under the C one criteria. So there is no hardship associated with the existing dwelling. You're reviewing this strictly under the C two criteria of a variance, not given the hardship circumstance. So you need to make sure on balance, you're comfortable that this fits in, um, with the zone plan, the master plan and the ordinance. And that the benefits of this variance relief would outweigh any of the detriments.
And can you, and you can, can you please list the possible benefit that was brought up?
I, I'm going to misspell. I don't know that they indicated, uh, specifically the benefits, but I, I'm going to.
So I think that that would be up to the applicant to indicate the benefits that they feel this is, um, providing under the C two criteria.
Well, well, Mr. Keshuba testified to, when he talked about the C two, he believed, uh, the variance would further uh, purposes A and C of the municipal land use law, uh, bringing them close, bringing lots closer to zone conformity than they currently exist, that, that was my notes, maybe Mr. Keshuba's here, he could elaborate.
Correct, also purpose I, desirable visual environment. Correct. Also purpose I desirable digital environment, uh, and, um, I don't have the MLU in front of me, but the, uh, maintaining or keeping the existing home instead of essentially putting it in the trash is certainly promoting recycling. Um, but those would be the purposes that'd be furthered, uh, by this application.
So then it's up to the board to decide if you feel that this application is furthering.
Well, I guess my question is if the application is that we're saving the house and it can't be saved, then what happens?
They have to come back.
Okay.
No, they wouldn't have to, nah.
Todd, would you have to come back?
They would not. So, and I think that's what we're trying to get you guys to understand. You, you shouldn't be weighing this testimony based upon saving an existing home.
I apologize that my client's not here to testify. He, he tried to get on, I think, earlier tonight, but I don't think he could. But, I mean, he's, he's, it's my understanding from conversation with him that he's gonna develop this house and he's gonna build a house in the back. That's what he does. I, I, if he was gonna get rid of the house, I'm sure he would have consulted with Joe and I let us know that his intention was to knock the house down. It was never, Joe, he never discussed it with me. Did he ever discuss that with you?
No, his intention from the beginning was always to save the house and I advised him that if you remove it, you can make it, you know, certainly wider and to conforming lots. He was well aware that that was a, a consideration, but still wanted to try and save the house.
If I could just, if I could answer the board member's question because I know Todd kind of cut me off there. So I don't think you should be weighing the testimony upon assuming the dwelling remains. You have to be comfortable that if the dwelling needed to be demoed or in the future someone came in and demoed, that the testimony provided to provide the undersized flag lot satisfied the criteria under criteria two of the municipal land use law. And what they had indicated was they advanced purposes A, C and I. And it's on the board members to determine whether or not you feel that the purposes of those goals of land use are accomplished.
Ms. Newman, I, I, I will, I will provide my opinion why, what I'm weighing this, this applicant on. And it's not based upon the things that we just discussed again. It was where we ended up going where if, if this applicant decided to remove this building, make things every, any, everything in conformance, there's an opportunity that we could get more than two homes on these two properties. They could create a cul-de-sac and ha, and, uh, provide more homes in that area. That, for me, that's what I'm weighing this application on. I haven't fully decided which way I'm gonna go, but that is what's, what I'm weighing it on. Am I wrong for weighing in on that particular part of the testimony?
Again, I, I mean, we can hear from our planner, you're trying to weigh that this variant stands on its own merits. One of the things you could be thinking is, is the lot available for a different purpose, but that's not what they're here for. We don't have a subdivision layout. I can't tell you how lots they yield.
But you.
You need to.
Subdivision layout, you know, they would be before this board and it may be conforming to all of the standards of this zone district, or they may be before this board asking for variances if they came in with a subdivision trying to create more lots.
And I think we should weigh the testimony that Todd has given us that the, the guy who owns the house would have said he was gonna remove the house or not. I mean, you gotta give that some weight.
And you've also protected the township and asking us for a deed restriction that's kind of unusual, which my client agreed to.
Yeah. And either scenario, you're still ending up with two homes.
Lots in an R15 zone. I think everybody's losing sight of this.
Yeah, I, I get it.
And it can't get to be any more lots based on our testimony.
I get it.
So I just want to leave you with that.
Yeah.
We got it.
Okay, well, we never closed the public portion of the meeting. So, so do we have anybody else raised, that raised their hand?
Yes, I have one other person. Or she raised it and lowered it, so I'm not sure if she wants to come in or not. If anyone else has questions or comments, please use the raise your hand feature before the chairman closes the public portion.
Somebody keeps raising it and lowering it.
Yes, it's Cindy. I don't know why she's doing that, but Cindy, I'm gonna move you in if you wanna ask a question.
Todd, somebody raised it again. It's Nancy. Nancy has her hand raised.
Here's Cindy. You have no volume, Cindy. You're muted.
Yeah, we can't hear you. We can, we can see you.
Cindy, you're speaking, but we're not hearing you.
Well, maybe while Cindy works out that problem, maybe give Nancy an opportunity.
Nancy, couldn't you unmute yourself?
Can you please say something, Nancy?
If it helps, I think Cindy and Nancy live in lots 151 and 152 on Mark Drive. At least there's a Cindy and Nancy in my certified list. They live behind the property. No, yeah, yeah.
Nancy, there, can you unmute yourself and put on your video? She's in the meeting, but I can't.
Cindy, we see you. Can you say something so we can see if we can hear you? You know, we're not getting any, we, we see your lips moving, but we don't hear anything, Cindy, unfortunately.
Is your volume up on your computer?
I don't know, would, would that affect the microphone that you're using? I don't know.
I have the microphone off.
Now you're on microphone. Did you? Cindy, can, can you give us a thumbs up if you can at least hear us? Okay, we can't hear you.
And you're muted.
Eileen, do we have an alternative? Can she make, can she dial in the number?
They're on the agenda. There's a million of them. If she wants me to read them off, hold on.
She's gonna try to, Cindy, are you gonna try to call in using a landline or a cell phone? Okay.
Yeah, if you've got a pen, go ahead.
Ready? Dial in by phone, area code, or excuse me, 1312-626-6799. You're gonna have to put in the ID code of the meeting, which is 932-9279-9941. And after the prompt key, you have to enter passcode 3333.
And if you can leave your video on unless you're using your phone, never mind. I just caught, use a, yeah, you can call in separately. And, and Nancy, if you could hear us, if you wanna use the same approach of dialing in, maybe you'll have better success of speaking with us.
I don't have a video for Nancy. Nancy, if you have video, if you could turn it on. Nancy, you're in the meeting. You can speak. We just can't see you. But I can't hear you either.
Right, somebody just dialed in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I, I apologize for that. I use Zoom every day. I don't know why I'm having so many technical difficulties tonight. Um, I, I, I live close to the property. It doesn't touch my land, but it touches.
Before you, Cindy, before you go any further, can we please get your name and address on the record, please?
Sure. Cynthia Satter, 40 Mark Drive, Howell, New Jersey.
And could you just spell your last name?
S A T T E R.
Thank you.
And, and I, I, I do have concerns about this request for a variance. Um, uh, you know, frankly, my first is the last sentence in the notice that we were given is that the board may give them other variances without further notice to us. Uh, I, I have concerns that that means that there may be things that we have a legal right to be told about. And that by justice, uh, you know, boilerplate language that we are expected to waive those rights. And I would object to any changes without proper notice as required by the statute.
Cindy, this is, this is Steve Tomblock and I'm the board attorney. That, that line that was in Mr. Cohen's notice is in every legal notice you'll probably ever see for every board application in New Jersey. What it is, is, uh, the applicant is required by law to identify what release it's seeking. But there's always the, during hearings, sometimes waivers and variances that the applicant wasn't even aware of are identified. So by including that line in his notice, he covers that and that's, that's standard legal practice throughout New Jersey.
I, I appreciate that it's standard legal practice. I still object that it's not adequate notice to the people that are required. And I don't believe that there is any, um, case law that is specifically said that it would allow for something that isn't properly noticed. I don't.
Mrs. Satter, we haven't asked for anything that we didn't notice for.
I didn't think that you had, so I'm just simply placing my objection on the record to that. My primary concern about this particular lot is that we're going to end up with either one parcel, which is what, what they refer to as a flagpole, which is going to have an extremely long driveway. Um, the purchaser of this property has already removed all of the trees, um, against the property that borders Mark Drive, implying that they intend to start, um, developing at the very, very back of the lot. That means we're going to have an extremely long driveway, which is basically going to make the problem for watershed. If you were gonna be excess water flowing out into Friendship where there's been no showing that the, uh, existing, um, storage system can handle that, or we're going to have a funnel of water into the homes at 42, 44, and my own, 40, and then slowing down to 38. We're already at the bottom of the hill. We're already relatively tentative for water. And I think that allowing a long, long, thin driveway will create water problems for these homeowners that we don't currently have and we don't deserve to have. And I don't see there being any way of addressing that. My other concern is just really what somebody's thrown out. Um, that this is really, I think, suspect because this is a large parcel, a, a way to take a minor subdivision and keep going back for variances for minor subdivision, minor subdivision, minor subdivision, until you've taken this parcel and you've put many, many homes without ever having to go through the requirements of major subdivision and without ever having to address water. And I think watershed and being that this is on green acres, uh, that it's, it's in a very low section of the area, is going to create extraordinary water problems for all of the homeowners that surround it. And there is no indication anywhere that the effect on the properties and the property values of the surrounding homes will be taken into account or that there's any control for potential flooding. This land was never intended to have a bunch of houses thrown on a cul-de-sac off of a driveway, and I object.
Steve, you wanna take the first part of that or you want me to take that?
Okay, uh, what part do you want me to respond?
Well, the legal, the legal part.
Oh, uh, well, why don't you, why don't you give it a crack?
Okay, um, Mrs. Satter, very simply, um, the purpose of this application is a reason to call it a minor subdivision because we're only allowed to have two lots. We've agreed to a deed restriction. We cannot put any further lots on the property. There is no proposed cul-de-sac. There are no drainage issues. Um, I will have my engineer testify to the fact that after I'm done that the subdivision will not in any way affect the drainage on your street. Um, I, I'm not really sure that you heard our testimony. If you think that we're gonna stack up houses on this property, that is exactly not what my client intends to do. He intends to build one additional house on 3.35 acres. That is it.
How is that deed restriction going to be put into place so that there cannot be an application made by subsequent owners, subsequent LLCs for another variance?
Well, the, the lot that would be created would have a deed restriction on it that states that this lot, the particular lot cannot be further subdivided.
And where does that deed get recorded, Todd?
It's recorded wherever deed in the Monmouth County Clerk's Office.
Thank you. And Rose at the left.
We have to file a deed to perfect the subdivision or a map. And in that filing, we will either do by map or by deed, but there will be a deed filed in the Monmouth County Clerk's Office so that anyone who ever purchases that property is well aware. And I doubt that this.
What engine, what engineering?
Come back before them.
You're, you're saying I doubt is not the same thing, it's saying thing is saying it can't happen. What engineering studies were done to exist, uh, to address the potential for water flowing to the properties that neighbor it?
Well, I don't know that for a single.
I'm not aware.
Have. You wanna interrupt me? That's fine. You can do that all night. Joe, would you like to address that as an engineer, please?
Certainly. So we did prepare a topographic survey of the property to identify where the property drains and where the house is proposed, uh, as well as the, the entirety of the, uh, lot. It all drains to the east towards the, uh, creek, uh, with the exception of the areas in front of the existing house which drains out to New Friendship Road. Uh, none of this property drains, uh, to the south, uh, towards Mark Drive.
And there's not gonna be any change whatsoever in the elevation when this house is built that will change the drainage? Because it won't be the first time that there's been a problem associated with sub neighboring homes when a new home is put in.
So when the, the property is developed, there'll be grading changes around the actual home, uh, as is expected to make sure, ma, maintain drainage around the property, home itself. Uh, but again, the, the property drains to the creek, uh, once developed, the property will drain to the creek. Nothing will drain to Mark Drive. Uh, we'll stipulate to that, that, that there will be no added drainage towards Mark Drive or any of the properties up front on Mark Drive.
How long will the driveway be?
Uh, we anticipate the driveway being at least 200 feet long to, to get to the rear of the property, actually 2, 275. Um, it depends on where the exact placement of the home is. It's probably gonna be about 300 feet, 350 feet.
What will the pitch be of the driveway?
Uh, it'll match the existing grade that's out there.
So the driveway will pitch to Friendship?
Uh, the front, uh, 125 feet or so, hun, between 100 and 125 feet would drain towards New Friendship. That's where the grade goes now. Uh, the remainder of it will drain towards, uh, the creek.
So the remainder is gonna drain into the wetlands?
Correct.
And there won't be a southern pitch whatsoever to that driveway once it crests?
Uh, there has to be a southern pitch on the front of the driveway that that area is, uh, 300 feet away from that rear property line. The entire property drains to, the, the property is essentially a swale down the middle of it. Uh, so it will drain towards the end of the flag, uh, and then turn east and go towards the, uh, towards the creek.
What was the purpose of, of clearing the very southern end of the lot if it wasn't to put structures there? Because as it sits now, all the trees that were there have been removed and have been chipped and left in a pile. If it wasn't to change or alter the natural terrain, why was that done?
I, I, I did not remove the trees. I'm not sure, um, why those trees were removed.
It was done in the last six months.
Doesn't matter when. He doesn't know, he doesn't know why.
You didn't do that?
He's the engineer and I'm. He's the engineer and I'm the attorney. We did not do that, no.
So nobody on this phone call or on this cut mate meeting can say why the very southern end of the lot was cleared if it wasn't for the intent to change the terrain, correct? Because if you were to go there today, you would see that all of the natural trees have been taken down and chipped and left in large piles against the Mark Drive properties.
I, I'm not denying that that's a fact, but I don't know that that my client's done anything. He's wrong. He's not trying to change the terrain, and he's trying to build one house more on that property. That's all he's trying to do.
I, I appreciate he's trying to build one house, but he's tried to build one house on almost six acres, and he is changing the terrain within two to three feet of the property lines to the south.
It's three point three acres, and I don't think he's trying to change the terrain, ma'am. I really don't.
How is this board to know that he's not doing that?
Well, how are you to know he's doing that? We have testimony on the record from an engineer who's told you that there is no drainage issue.
Currently. My concern is.
Or going to be.
Yeah, let's get that, let's get that clarified, Cindy. Let's get that clarified on the record, because I believe I heard Joe say as well that he'd put on, he'd stipulate on the record that there, the drainage as it acts now will continue to drain even after the home is built on it. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, drain to the creek and not to the rear yard of Mark Drive, yeah.
Correct.
And he has no intention.
We gotta move on, on, we gotta move on, on the drainage part. I'm sorry. He's already stipulated. There's not much more he's going to be able to tell you.
I think it's an important problem, and I'm not hearing anybody say, because he's not on this call, to say that he didn't clear all that out because he intended to modify, and I'm not feeling that anybody is taking anything into consideration that he won't ultimately do that.
But if he does, he ultimately do what?
To change the drainage. Well, how a drain.
You have to find.
Let's stop there for a second. Let's say the drainage is changed, Joe, or Todd, whichever one wants to answer. Wha- what is, what is, what is this residence, uh, rem- uh, remedies? You, you've stipulated that the drainage is not going to change, right?
Unless I'm mistaken, whoever develops this lot, my client or anybody else, has to get a plot plan approved. They're going to have to get approved drainage and approved utilities and approved building setbacks and everything like anybody else is building it down.
Right.
Correct, as well as approval from the Soil, the Road and Cement Control, uh, Real Soil, the Road and Cement Control, uh, as any development here will certainly exceed five thousand square feet at the start of it.
So, so, so the, by, if this board acts favorable, we're just allowing the, the, the lot to be subdivided. There's a whole nother level of, of, of approvals that you would need to get to even build a home on that and meet all the state's requirements, correct?
Correct.
Town's requirements?
Yes, certainly.
As anybody would.
I'm only, I'm only asking these questions because sometimes, you know, these aren't, we don't, we, not everybody here builds this stuff all day, so it's nice.
I understand, and you have a concerned resident, and we'd like to address her concerns. And our engineer has succinctly testified that it doesn't drain that way. It's not going to change the drainage that way. And whatever my client's done to the properties hasn't changed the drainage either.
And it's been stipulated on the record, so I don't know mu- how much more this board, unless my professionals can tell me differently, I'm not sure there's not much more this board can ask.
Can the board require that they not modify the drainage so that we do not have problems in the future? Because frankly, litigation is never a solution. It's own.
Ma'am, they already agreed, they already agreed on the record that there is going to be no diversion of water towards Mark Drive. In the event water was diverted to Mark Drive, they would be in violation of any actions the board took.
And where does that leave everybody with a lawsuit and a remedy seven or eight years from now?
I, I don't understand why, again, they would have, they'd agree to a condition that there would be no diversion of water of Mark Drive. The corner of this property at Lot one forty-six is elevation one ten, and it flows down the property line towards the creek at roughly ninety-eight. That's, that's grade of this land. The land flows towards the creek. If, in fact, the grade is modified and it starts negatively impacting the lots, and again, you're Lot one fifty-one, so you don't really even, you're not contiguous to this property. You're next to Lot one fifty. The, the lots are long, like one forty-six, one forty-seven, one forty-eight are higher. But again, they've stipulated that they're not going to divert water towards Mark Drive. This board has listened to the testimony, and if they acted, whatever action they take, that would be a stipulation of that. If they were in violation of that, they would be obligated to comply.
Laura, please explain to her that a township engineer at the end of this whole thing, when a building permit is requested, is going to review that plot plan and see where the drainage is.
Yes.
I, I appreciate that I am not contiguous, but I happen to be one of the two lowest lots on Mark Drive. If there is a water problem, we all know water doesn't flow uphill. It flows downhill. If there is a modification of drainage, the person who will be harmed is me.
Okay.
And it's extremely important to me, as a homeowner, as my largest investment, that there be a guarantee that by allowing this modification, which is not necessary, we, that house has been there for fifty years without a secondary house behind it, that my home, my neighbors' homes, that we are all adequately protected and that there's a guarantee that it's not going to be modified to ha- allow for water drainage because there's already steps being taken to modify the rear of the lot.
Ms. Satter, do, do you have any other questions, please?
I do not.
Okay, well, we really appreciate your testimony. Uh, Eileen, are we able to get Nancy on the phone?
I don't even see that Nancy's still on the meeting. Oh, yeah, Nancy is on the meeting.
She's still on the meeting.
Nancy, can you call in? Because we cannot hear you. I'm going to move.
Do we have any other, do we have anybody else raising their hand?
Yes, I have two other people raising their hand.
Okay.
And Chairman, for the record, it's ten thirty. Are you extending this meeting? Because I got an early in appointment.
Yeah, I gotta, gotta be somewhere. Is everybody okay with going to at least eleven?
I, I'm going to have to excuse myself because I get up at five AM and have a long drive.
Does that leave us with a quorum?
I'm having trouble keeping my eyes open right now.
Fair enough. I had, I had that situation a couple weeks ago.
Yeah.
Yes, we have a quorum.
Okay.
All right. Thank you all. Goodbye.
Bye. Good night. So Phil Lau, can you unmute yourself and ask?
To start your video, please. Go ahead.
Mr. Lau, can you please give us your, uh, if your name Phil Lau and your street address, please?
Yes, my name is Phil Lau. My address is forty-eight Mark Drive.
Thank you, sir.
So what Nancy or Cindy was saying, that there was a, a tree cut probably several months ago. Um, right, well, it's probably three houses down my, from, from where my house is. I just wanted to s- know if the developer is going to do the same thing and cut all of the trees back there.
Mr. Lau, one, one question. This is Steve Tomblock, the Board Attorney. Did you say one tree was cut down?
Several trees.
Several trees.
Several trees, several trees.
How big were the trees, Mr. Lau?
Uh, huge.
Huge.
Big trees.
Okay.
It would, it would create a sh- a, a shade. Uh, it was beautiful back there, but, uh, once the, the owner purchased that lot back there, he, uh, began, um, cutting all the trees back there. And I, I agree that the water, um, we get a lot of water down to where my property is. And if he starts cutting more trees, it's going to create a lot of water damage down on Mark Drive.
I guess the question for Mr. Lau, uh, Mr. Cohen is, does the developer intend to remove additional trees in proximity to the Mark Drive lots?
Not that I'm aware of.
Were they intent to plant more trees?
Not that I'm aware of.
This is Cindy Satter. I can't.
He's gonna, he's gonna have to comply with, you know, all the requirements of the township for anybody to build a single family house on a lot. No different than anybody.
Okay. I was just concerned about the particular.
Do you have any further questions, Mr. Lau?
That's it.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, one more time for Nancy, or is there anybody else got their hand raised?
I have one more. Christina Sikowski.
Christina dropped off. Oh, she's coming in. Never mind.
You have no, we can't hear you.
You want to call into the number? Thank you.
Nancy, if you can hear us, you're going to have to call in because we're not hearing you.
Cattail Drive, what is that?
If I may, while we're waiting for Nancy to call back in, this is Cindy Satter again. And I appreciate that Council isn't fully aware of everything his client is going to do. But it doesn't mean that his client isn't going to do that. And the fact that his client deforested, which is probably a better phrase than cut down trees, um, that he doesn't intend to continue to do that. These were all longstanding trees. They were natural growth, and he took them all down.
Mr. Chairman, just on this issue, uh, you know, Mr. Cohen, your client isn't here. Uh, did your client obtain a tree removal permit from the town?
Well, I have no idea.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I think that, you know, I, I know that we want to try to continue till eleven o'clock, but in fairness, I think we have to confirm what the removal activities were and ensure that they were properly permitted.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Okay, can we make a motion to carry this application? Because I don't, I don't have a lot, I don't, I.
I'm, I'm on the township website, and there is a tree removal permit issued on August fourth, twenty twenty, for that property.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. They, it was allowed, he was approved for the removal of three trees.
He took down far more than three trees.
We don't know that.
I know that.
It was in, it was inspected and it passed, so whatever plan he submitted, he passed his inspections.
I'd be happy to be sworn in to testify that he cut down more than three trees, and I observed it.
But you can file a complaint with the township.
Mr. Cohen?
Yeah.
Cohen, let her, let her get sworn in.
He's in violation.
Mr. Cohen, let her get sworn in.
Yeah. I believe she's already sworn in.
No, she hasn't been sworn. Ms. Satter, since there's a dispute, a factual dispute, we're going to swear you in, so you're, so, uh, do you agree to be sworn in? So all your testimony, okay?
Yes, I do.
Do you swear firm that all the testimony you will provide or have provided before this board will be the truth?
Yes, I do swear in.
Okay, thank you.
Please, do you want her to restate her name and address for the record?
My name is Cynthia Satter. I reside at forty Mark Drive, Howell, New Jersey.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Satter, go ahead.
And I, I personally observed him cut down at least four trees behind the home, uh, which would be forty-four Mark Drive, um, a, a few trees behind forty-two Mark Drive, and a few that would be further in the lot. It is easily inspectable. There are large, large mounds left of all the wood chip. It was done with a large machine in the middle of the afternoon on a weekend. It was easy to see from my backyard, certainly from the windows of my home. And I suspect that everybody else on this call, uh, from Mark Drive, will testify that he removed far more than three trees.
Do you have any reason to know if he's in violation of his woodland's, uh, permit, his tree removal permit?
You just said that the permit was only for three trees.
Do you, but he may have been able to cut other trees down at work, but you, do you have any idea if he's in violation of it?
My concern is that he is deforesting the properties against Mark Drive, and I can only think that he would take down those trees that are far from the center of the lot because he intends to do something. And that is not, we're telling this board. You're telling them that he's not.
We've put on the record that he intends to build one single-family residence. We've asked permission for one lot, and we've deed restricted, agreed to deed restrict the balance of the property. So whatever you're saying is not possibly true.
Are you telling me that I didn't see what I saw, sir? Because you weren't there.
I did not say that. I did not say that at all. You keep inferring that my client wants to develop the property with more than one lot, which is the furthest thing from the truth.
Can I, can I interrupt one second?
Sworn in. So you're not sworn in. You may be council record, but you're not sworn in.
Oh, no, no, I am under, I, I am under sworn duty to tell the truth.
We're not here to argue. We're not here to argue. So.
You have no personal.
Ms. Satter, Ms. Satter, please. Eileen, you needed to say something?
I just want to bring up that on the tree removal permit, the applicant stated that he took three trees down in the rear of the property. It's shown on a plot plan, and it was based on the neighbor on Mark Drive asking him to remove them because they're over his pool. So that's why they were taken out.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
There were more than three trees removed.
Okay, but that is, all right.
That's not within the jurisdiction of this board.
We're here for a subdivision application. Whether the applicant violated his tree removal permit is, is not germane. The gentleman is not here to testify this evening. It's not germane to the subdivision application that this board is, is tasked to consider. So, shall we, shall we move on? Okay, so we have to move on. Cindy, we appreciate your testimony. Um, was Christina able to get on the phone?
Hold on, I think I have her phone here. Christina, are you on your phone now?
Hi, this is Christina Sikowski of Two Cattail Drive in Howell.
Yes.
How's everyone doing?
Thank you.
Uh, the question that, the question that I have is I just want to be sure that that, both properties are going to be used as residential and not commercial because of the owner's business affiliations.
The answer to your question is they're going to be for residential purposes only.
Residential only? Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I have no one else raising their hand.
Okay, that being said, we'll close the public portion.
Is there a natural gas connection over there?
I don't know if there's an active one. I, I anticipate that a, a new service line will be installed.
Are you going to close the public portion?
Me?
Yeah.
A public portion? Uh, there's no one else with their hand raised, so you can close it.
Yes, please close it.
A public has been closed by the chairman. Thank you.
So. Steve, uh, can, can you just please reiterate? Um, I believe I heard you say that we had a citizen that had a concern about extra trees being cut down. Eileen is, is, is a public official, has looked at the public official documents, and has determined that, in fact, there was a request to cut down trees. But it also, I believe I heard you say that. But it also, I believe I heard you say that, and, and correct, let's stop there. It, it is fair for me to say that it's, it's acceptable to accept what Eileen has told us as a board, correct? Yeah, that's correct. She's, what she's doing is telling you what the public record provides for the removal of certain trees. We don't know if those trees that were moved by that permit are the same trees that were referenced by the neighbors on Mark Drive. We don't know that.
Or what the size of the trees were, Steve. You don't know what the size of the trees was. Not all trees require a permit.
Mr. Nacastro, just let me, I, I'm, I'm almost there. So I also heard you say that it's not really in the purview of this board to get into the middle of the amount of how many trees may or may not have been cut down. That's, that's a, that's a code enforcement issue. Is that fair to say?
It is.
Yes.
It is. If it was, if it was germane to the boards looking at whether a subdivision was warranted un- under this, on this property, then yes. But here, the applicant said that they're gonna be developing a house, de restricting the property to prevent further subdivision, that, that talked about the drainage patterns. And then after that, we learned that there was an issue of tree removal. We don't know, we still don't know whether the trees that were moved at the request of that Mark Drive owner were the same ones that are, the neighbors are complaining of. We just don't know that. But even if it was, that's still not an issue for the planning board. It's an issue for code enforcement that a tree removal permit was violated. And so far, Eileen is saying it was inspected and approved. There's been no further notices of violation for unpermitted tree removal. So it's speculative. And even if, again, assume it's all true, does that impact Mr. Cohen's application? I'm not seeing it, really.
Thank you. That, that's kind of where I was going, Mr. Castro. That's why.
Well, you got that, pal.
Appreciate you taking, taking, taking a second to let me continue. Thank you. Okay, so really, what's, what's in front of us, if I could summarize for what, for me, for my, my, my understanding is, we have, we have some criteria that Joe's put on the record that we have to weigh, which we personally, I don't, I don't agree with any of the stuff he said. But I do believe that the possibility of having more homes associated with this property, which was put on the record, for me personally, does weigh into, to the criteria. And I asked for an opinion on that last, and I don't think I've got a really good answer. I'd like to bring that back up. Can our professionals say, is that some criteria that I could take into consideration at this particular time?
I think if you consider the criteria of light air and open space, so-
Yeah.
Yes.
And what Laura's saying, another thing is, you're not considering the variances on C one. We put that aside. It's not gonna be undue hardship case. It's the flexible C, whether the benefits of granting these variances for this subdivision outweigh the detriments. And one of the, one of the positive things that the applicant has offered is a, uh, a promise of by deed restricted, not to further subdivide or not to come in with a cul-de-sac. So the board could say, well, the populate, the, uh, development densities proposed by the applicant are far superior than a cul-de-sac with crammed with fifteen thousand square foot lots. So I think that's something the board can weigh. If you know that the property could potentially support much greater density, that, that applicant is willing to restrict against that in favor of a two lot subdivision, that's something the board can weigh and should weigh. That's, that's a ben- that's a planning benefit versus a, the detriment of greater density.
Thank you for making my closing argument, Steve. I appreciate that.
So, Mr. Cohen, i- if you could summarize that, you concur that that is, that is something that we could weigh as a board?
Oh, I do concur. I mean, he laid it out perfectly and, and I'll go one step further. I mean, my client, not once in every discussion with me did he talk about cul-de-sac, ever. Uh, it was never even a consideration. He, he wants to keep the remaining house and build one more lot on three point three, five acres. He understands the environmental sensitivity to the left. He's not looking to create any drainage issues. It's, it's probably the simp- most simple application you're gonna have. They got very complicated quickly.
Right, and, and, and Mr. Cohen, if he decided to demolish this house and put two, two houses-
Well, I would recommend that he, they go, that they have Joe look at-
Having any of this discussion, correct? If he decided that he was gonna demo the house and put two, two houses on it, we wouldn't even be having this argument.
No, we'd have a further discussion because we'd probably come in with the cul-de-sac and we're demoing the house. Why wouldn't you? You get at least three lots.
Yeah. Well, let me, Brian, I, I, and I don't want to beat a dead horse here. I want to go back to something that Christine said, okay, which is poor planning, correct? We are, we creating a flag lot that doesn't necessarily have to be created based upon a hardship that doesn't exist. Christine, can you, is that your opinion?
Yes.
Okay, so-
That's not, we're not going on a hardship. We're going on the benefits outweighing the detriments and we've gone through the detriment. We're not looking for a hardship argument here. Nick, we're building one house on three point three, five acres in an R three zone. That's what everybody needs to focus on. And we're deed restricting the lot. If I was my client, I'd knock this house down. I'm serious. I've, I've been doing this a long time with you guys.
Yeah.
I'm very, you know, yeah, I come straight shooter. I'd be knocking his house down.
Stop the development, Nick. Listen, where are we going? I'm, we're gonna make a motion?
What are we doing with this? I'll, I'll entertain a motion. I've, I've heard enough.
I'll make a motion to approve this application with all the stipulations, the deed restrictions and all, everything else that was testified.
I will second that.
Mr. Husser?
No.
Mr. Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Ms. Casper has left. Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much for your time this evening. Uh, we will do our best to keep the neighbors' concerns in our, uh, in our final, uh, development and all those conditions that we agreed to will be in a resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, being at the end of the night and we're over, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Uh, bye.
All right.
Stay everybody. Have a good night.
Saturday.
Thank you.
Thank you.